National Night Out is August 6th, Tuesday, 5 to 8 p.m. Brookline Avenue Playground.
Good evening. Okay, someone has a turn up there.
Good night.
Okay. Good evening, I'm Bernard Green, Chair of the Brookline Select Board, and this is the meeting of the Select Board for Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024. Let's start off with any announcements or updates from the Select Board? No? Oh, David.
Last week, I had a tour with Mike Jacobs of the BHA Properties, and also Mike Alpern, and I found it quite informative. It was great to see all the progress that is being made in some of the new constructions and renovations. The BHA does a really impressive job of maintaining the 13 properties that are within our borders, and for, I'm sure that all of you have done it at some point, but for those who want to have a tour again, they're always willing to do that, and I would recommend it.
Yes, I'll second that. It's very interesting, you know, what BHA is doing, and it reflects the fact that Brookline, for all of its faults, is an open community for people with lower income, whether they're seniors, or families, or whatever, so I think that the BHA is something that we should all know more about. Any other? John?
Yes, I, for reasons that are personal, in part, I'm very interested in things to do in Brookline this summer, says the Select Board member who hasn't yet figured out how to plan his summer vacation. So, there are a lot of things that, you can have what they call a staycation in Brookline and have a lot of fun at the same time, and I'm just going to mention a couple of things that are coming up very soon. Thursday of this week, there's going to be an ice cream social at the College Corner Library in the meeting room, and I myself think that, you know, the more ice cream socials that the world has, the better. So, this particular one is Thursday, July 25th, at 6 to 7 p.m. There is also an ongoing concert series, which takes place every Wednesday night from 6 to 7 p.m. at Fisher Hill Reservoir Park, and upcoming, in the concert series, I'll just mention two of the upcoming concerts. The July 31st, there is going to be the Kaliba, which is an Afro-pop group, and July 24th, there are the Mystic Jammers, and they are a reggae group. So anyway, every Wednesday night, 6 to 7:30 p.m. at Fisher Hill Reservoir Park. Just two of the things that make Brookline a pretty fun place, we're a fun place year round, but during the summer, we have a lot of special events, and I think that's great. I also want to mention, excuse me, that many people, I'm sure, have read the news of the passing of Jack Connors. Pretty amazing guy, Brookline resident, as the Boston Globe says, legendary for his generosity to Boston College, among many other institutions and causes that he gave to. He is also cited by the Globe as being the driving force behind the merger of Mass General Hospital and Brigham and Women's, a real towering figure in the lay leadership of the Archdiocese of Boston, confidant of Cardinal Bernard Law, and a person who just is, was admired by everyone for his, both his generosity, but also his spirit of helping others who are disadvantaged and need a hand up. And the Globe says his greatest legacy, and who am I to argue, is something called Camp Harbor View, which is a program for disadvantaged youth that he launched in 2007. He was partnered with Mayor Thomas Menino from Boston in this endeavor, and it is a legacy that truly his surviving members of his family can take great pride in. So, Jack Connors, figure known not just in the greater Boston area, but throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and a Brookline resident, died this week.
Thank you, John. Any other?
Yeah, I have one.
Yes, Mike.
We have a, well, let me go back just a bit. We have had a discussion about ARPA funds for Affordable Childcare earlier this year, and we have a proposal from the Trust Early Learning Center for a very interesting partnership between the town, the Trust Early Learning Center, and the Brookline Community Foundation, and it needs some further discussion and further refinement, particularly, we have to coordinate with the Community Foundation, which would be asked to provide some of the funding, but I want people to know that that's going forward, and one of the things that I tend to do is to reach out to the community that is most likely to be served by Affordable Childcare, and get some feedbacks and participation, so that this is not something that's coming from above, but rather coming from participation by the community as well.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Okay, yes, yes.
National Night Out is August 6th, Tuesday, 5 to 8 p.m. Brookline Avenue Playground. Come one, come all, it's a lot of fun, there'll be trucks, and Bear will be there, Bear the police dog, Brookline's favorite celebrity, so please do come down, it's always a lovely time, and some are things to do.
And we also have a Flock Party on Saturday.
That's right.
I know nothing about, other than the name.
Yes.
Explain that.
Sure. We're very excited to have the Flock Party, which is the announcement and unveiling of some of the public art that was developed as part of a community dialogue. You know, this is something that really the community participated in, and one of the things that we heard over and over again from the folks who were asking for, it was public art to spruce up Brookline, and so this will be the unveiling of some of the ceramic turkeys decorated by local artists. They are lovely, and really excited, really excited to see them, and it's a great, again, reminder, just like with the wrapped box, wrapped utility boxes that you can see in some parts of town, and the movement that we've had with the assistance of the Select Board to try and be more protective of public art that currently exists, you know, just making us a more vibrant place to live, a more attractive place to live, really does improve the quality of our lives, so it's another great step forward for public art. We're grateful for the public's input for all of this, and we'll see you on Saturday to ring in the turkeys.
Okay, let's be careful there. Okay, with that, let's go to public comment. Tiffany, could you read the rules?
Thank you for joining us for public comment. This is an opportunity for us to hear your perspective on the issues in Brookline that matter to you. Each person speaking tonight is limited to three minutes. You don't need to use the entire time, but you may if you like. Once 15 minutes has been met, there is an opportunity at the conclusion of the Select Board's business for additional comments. Members of the public sometimes raise questions during public comment. We may be able to provide a quick answer to a question, but are more likely to work with staff to get a more thorough answer and respond over email. We'll let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining and when your time is up. Please conclude your remarks at that time. If you have more to say, you are welcome to send an email to board members expressing your thoughts in greater detail. And the first person signed up for public comment is Regina Fraley. No? Oh, I saw your name. Next is Alan Sheprow.
Okay, thank you for hearing me. I, like many other Brookline residents who own a car, have to pay for overnight parking. My monthly rate just increased $30 a month to $2,520 per year. That's $210 a month. Some like me pay these expenses directly, while others may pay indirectly, say to a landlord, who secures overnight parking for their tenants. And then there are those who prefer to take a chance and park their vehicles on the street. If they get a ticket, they get a ticket, usually $30. But based on what I've witnessed, they usually don't get a ticket, maybe five to seven tickets per month. Based on what I pay per month, they're paying less than me, a lot less. I live on the corner of William Street and Winchester Street, just over the Race Crosswalk, a few hundred feet south of the Brookline Senior Center. I've noticed William Street lately seems to have become a haven for overnight street parking. These are cars with town-issued special parking permits, and cars with handicap placards. I understand that these cars are allowed to park overnight, and then there are others, including a big box truck with no specially-marked privileges. I consider this truck to be a security issue, as it blocks my apartment building from the street view, from any suspicious activity. For the past few weeks, I've noticed no tickets on this truck or other vehicles for overnight parking. These vehicles, of course, have no special parking permits or handicap placards, and when I ask the person who drives this truck what his secret is to not getting a ticket, he told me, and I quote, "Because I can." Why am I paying so much money to follow a law, and others are allowed to get away with it? And what makes this harder is that I'm a retired senior on a fixed income. As I understand it, no overnight street parking is allowed, is the law to allow for security reasons, and for emergency vehicles to more easily travel the streets in the dark. I understand the law is also in place to allow the street cleaners to clean the streets at night, and to plow the streets in the winter. At least, that's what was told to me when I moved to Brookline about 40 years ago. Brookline has no law of overnight, of no, I'm sorry, Brookline has no law of no overnight street parking. In other words, Brookline between the hours of 2 a.m. and 6 a.m. is basically one big no-parking zone. Special permits are not allowed to park in a no-parking zone, and cars with handicap placards, and I used to have one, get some special-
You have 30 seconds remaining.
I'm sorry?
You have 30 seconds remaining.
Okay. Get no, get some special privileges, but then cannot park in a no-parking zone. And finally, in addition, if cars are parked on the streets, how and when does my street get cleaned in the winter? How and when does my street get plowed? In addition to paying for off-street parking, I also pay with my taxes and have to have my street cleaned and plowed. I'm asking, I come before the Select Board and the Transportation Board to ask you to consider raising the parking fines in Brookline, particularly the overnight-
That concludes your time.
-what Brookline currently charges to the state maximum, which I believe would be from $30 to $50, and to, at least, enforce this law at least 85% of the time.
All right, got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to make a copy of your comments and give it to the Select Board?
I will do that. Can I email them to you?
Yes.
Thank you.
That concludes all the persons who signed up in person, or in advance. If there's anyone online who would like to speak for public comment, please use the Raise the Hand feature. There are 22 participants online, and no one is using the Raise the Hand feature to speak at this time.
Okay, thank you. Tiffany, please help me, I can't get to my notes on my computer, so I'm sort of stumbling along here. If I mess up, let me know.
Okay, sure.
I have some notes, but I don't know. Okay, next, miscellaneous items. First of all, approval of meeting minutes from July 9, 2024. Anyone have any edits or corrections to those? No? Then I'm more of approval of the minutes for July 9, 2024. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyak?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Pearlman?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Next, I'd like to take an omnibus fashion items, excuse me, 3B through 3V. three B. through three V. Um, unless anyone wants to pull anything out of that, uh, list, I'd like to do those in omnibus fashion. Seeing no one raising a hand on that, uh, I move approval of items three B. through three V. of the miscellaneous calendar. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoyak?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Uh, Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Pearlman?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Next, uh, our main calendar. First, this.
I'm so sorry. I'm sorry. It's my, it's my fault. I wanted an announcement that I missed.
Okay.
But I want to thank Tiffany for flagging this for me, um, which is the survey that the board asked us to send out to businesses, local businesses regarding, um, the use of, uh, late licenses, late, late, late closure licenses is now out. Um, so if you are a business owner and you received this, or if you are a business manager and you received this document, we both mailed it to you and we emailed it to you. We, we used every address we had on file, uh, to try and reach out to you. Um, if you, um, or one of your clients, if you're an attorney, uh, has received this, please fill it out and send it back to us. We really do find this information helpful, uh, and we would love your feedback, um, as the select board considers how to effectively move forward, um, with authorizing, um, closing times for bars and restaurants. So, thank you. Sorry for the delay.
No problem. Uh, could you also, um, uh, tell people that the select board office is going to be closed tomorrow? Apparently we're being spiffed up a little bit.
Yes, tomorrow, Wednesday, the select board office is open, but we are open remotely only. So if you have business on the sixth floor in the select board office in Town Hall, please call us. The, the, all the information is posted on the website. You can also call us at any time, six one seven seven three zero two two zero zero. Again, six one seven seven three zero two two zero zero, and we will route your call to the right person. This is because we are reorganizing the office furniture so that everyone who works at the select board office, we now have a full complement of staff, the first time since the pandemic. Very, very grateful for that, and we will, we, we need to find space for them all to sit and work. So we are reorganizing the office and it will be reopened on Thursday. But again, we are all working remotely, so please reach out via phone or email if you need anything.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next, September election. I see that, uh, the town clerk, Mr. Kaufman's in the audience. He's going to introduce, uh, a number of questions that we have to approve.
Certainly, thank you. Uh, so, uh, before you, the board today are three different questions related to the September third state primary election. Uh, the election, uh, is going to be, um, uh, used to set the ballot for the November election, uh, and it features a number of different races, uh, all the way from, uh, U S. Senate, uh, all the way down to some of the county offices that we have. Um, before somebody asks, it does not include president, so the news over the weekend is not going to impact this election that we have in September. Um, the first item that's before the board is the election warrant, uh, which simply lists, um, the precincts, the polling locations, the voting, uh, times, as well as the offices that will be on the ballot. Uh, I will note for this election, due to the state representative precincts, we do have those split precincts, uh, five and five A., thirteen and thirteen A., fourteen and fourteen A. Um, these are precincts where the state rep line does not follow the actual precinct line. So voters in those precincts will all go to the same place. They will continue to vote where they are, but when they go in, they will have two different check-in tables, depending on which side of the precinct they live. Uh, so we will have extra staff at those polling locations to make sure voters, uh, know where they are going. Um, if you have any questions about your polling place, you can always go to wheredoyivotma.com and, uh, find out where your polling location is. The second item that's before the board is, uh, the approval of early voting times and locations for the September election. In the interest of consistency, to make sure voters know what to expect, we are, uh, asking for the same, uh, hours as we did for both the March and May elections. Uh, that is on, uh, Saturday and Sunday, August twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, from ten A M. until four P M. at three locations, at Town Hall, at the Coolidge Corner Library, and at the Putterham Library. And then, uh, throughout that week, from the twenty-sixth until the thirtieth, uh, during the town clerk's regular business hours here at Town Hall. That's eight to five Monday through Thursday and eight to twelve thirty on Friday. Uh, that is available for any voter who wants to vote in the election. Uh, even if you requested a mailed ballot, you can still come in and vote early, as long as you have not sent your mailed ballot back in. Uh, the final item that's before the board is the approval of the police details for the September election. Um, it is a standard compliment that we have, a, uh, a police officer at every polling location to ensure election security and integrity, um, as well as some officers who are stationed at Town Hall to bring ballots out to the precincts and other ones who are assigned to places where we've seen issues with traffic, parking, uh, or other, uh, situations. Um, this has been reviewed by the chief of the police department, uh, and had, uh, her sign off, um, and is, uh, something that's a fairly standard practice for us. A note that I will have, the final item on that is, um, any further officers assigned is necessary for the proper safety and security of the election. Uh, we include that primarily for the September election. It's also the first day of school. Uh, so if there's a situation where a principal wants to have an extra police officer for crowd control or another issue they have, um, we want to be able to assign that police officer, um, if it is requested. Um, so that's why there is a little bit of that open language down at the bottom, is to give us the flexibility, uh, to increase the police details if needed. Um, the September election's already underway. Uh, I know it's still July, but the ballots were delivered to our office a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, staff worked tirelessly last week. Over three nights last week, we mailed over nine thousand ballots, um, out to voters. So if you requested a mailed ballot, uh, before, uh, a couple of weeks ago, you should already be receiving it. Uh, it either went out late last week or, uh, due to the technical issues that happened on Friday where our mailroom's postage machine was down. Uh, some of them did go out Monday morning, uh, but you should be receiving those ballots. If you did not request a mailed ballot, you'll be receiving a postcard in the mail that can be used to ask for a mailed ballot. Uh, so feel free to fill that out and send it back in. Um, you can return your ballots by mail in person or in one of our ballot drop boxes.
Great, thank you.
Questions?
Paul?
Just a quick question. Thank you, Ben. Um, I'm wondering about early voting, if you have any statistics from the annual election with respect to the distribution of how those, uh, remote early voting locations were, the type of demand that they saw.
Absolutely. So we had, uh, six hundred and twenty-three voters cast their ballots during in-person early voting at the May twenty-twenty-four election, uh, which was slightly lower than we saw in May twenty-twenty-three. Overall turnout was slightly lower because that twenty-twenty-three election had the, um, uh, ballot questions, which drove a lot of turnout. Uh, the weekend, uh, the Saturday and Sunday, uh, saw about, uh, three hundred of those voters cast their ballots. So almost half of the voters cast their ballots during the weekend, uh, and it was split about fifty-fifty. Fifty percent of voters did it at Town Hall, and then the other fifty percent did it at one of the two library locations during that week. Um, what we tend to see, especially for, uh, local elections, is, uh, where the competitive race is, tends to have more turnout. There's a competitive race down in South Brookline, there's more turnout down at the Putterham Library. Uh, for that purpose, we would anticipate for the September election, due to a competitive, uh, state representative race, uh, that's in precincts, uh, fourteen, fifteen, uh, thirteen A. and five, uh, that we will see a bit of a higher turnout, uh, during early voting at the Putterham Library location than we will, uh, in other locations.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, uh, was there any other questions? I'd like to move approval of all three items together, unless anyone objects, and that is, uh, I move approval of the, uh, issuance of the warrant for the state primary election scheduled for September third, um, for the, uh, setting the date for early voting, uh, for the state primary election scheduled for September third, and, uh, authorizing police details for the September third state primary election. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Uh, John Van Skoyak?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
Uh, David Pearlman?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Did I state, state that correctly?
Nope, that was correct. Thank you very much.
Okay. A, a, a select board member who remain unnamed, uh, gave me a quizzical look. Okay, uh, next, uh, this is a public hearing scheduled for five forty-five. So we're a little late, but, uh, not too late. And this is related to the Newbury of Brookline, um, elderly housing, uh, development, change of ownership, common victor, entertainment license, and alteration of premises, and change of manager, and an alternate manager. These are things that we're, uh, going to be voting on. Uh, is there anyone here to speak to this?
Aye, uh, I'm here. Stephanie Bedro from Arlo across the street, um, representing, um, one, two, three Fisher Avenue tenant doing business as the Newbury of Brookline. Good evening. Um, as you all may know, the applicant is the operator of the senior living facility situated at one twenty-three, one thirty-three Fisher Ave., with current plans to open by year end. The license was originally issued to Will Ball for Brookline tenant, um, doing business at Ball for Brookline, but a name change of both the corporation and the D B. A. was allowed by the board on June third, twenty-twenty-four. Um, this evening, the board is here on a multiple, uh, amendment application, um, to further amend its liquor license, as well as on its application for a common victor license, an entertainment license, and an alternate manager application. For the liquor license, the applicant is first seeking the approval of a new manager of record, Frances Bates. Frances is here today to answer any questions the board might have. She has been with the current operator of the facility since March and has experience running operations in restaurants and senior living facilities since at least two thousand and nineteen. She's been TIPS certified, crowd management certified, quarried, fingerprinted, and is familiar with the regulations of the town of Brookline and the A B. C. C. Next, the applicant is seeking to update the ownership of the L. C. to reflect the departure of former owners, Michael Sean Brennan, Susan Juro, um, and, uh, that's more of a technical applicant, application, um, for the A B. C. And finally, the applicant is seeking to amend the description of the premises to add, uh, a skyline lounge, which is not formally included in the premise description that was initially approved by the A B. C. C. The lounge will seat a total of forty-five people and would be located on the sixth floor of the facility. Um, notice to a butters was sent out together with a copy of the legal ad published in the Boston Herald on June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four, and the green return receipt cards will be submitted to the licensing clerk. As it relates to the Brookline licenses, the applicant has filed for its C. V. and entertainment licenses. There are a total of six bars and restaurants with a total of one hundred and sixty-eight dining seats, sixty-seven bar seats, and forty-one patio seats. There will also be room service provided to the occupants. A description of operating procedures, uh, a menu, or menus, rather, a litter letter have all been submitted to the board. For entertainment, there will be televisions, radios, movies, live instrumental and vocal music, and holiday shows offered throughout the year. And finally, the applicant seeks the approval of the, uh, alternate manager of record, Andrea Stewart, who is also here this evening. Ms. Stewart has been working in healthcare since two thousand and sixteen, has been working in Brookline since twenty-twenty, is TIPS certified, crowd management certified, quarried, fingerprinted, and is likewise available, uh, familiar with the regulations of the town of Brookline and the A B. C. C. And that's really all I have for this application. If the board has any questions, please, uh, feel free. Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, but first let's hear if the select board has any questions or any questions. Uh, Paul?
Thank you. Um, I just had one quick question about the entertainment license. Is that only for indoor entertainment, or would it include the outdoor patio?
Um, I believe presently the plan is for indoor entertainment only. Um, I, I don't know if Frances or Andrea can speak a little bit more to that. I don't know if they have been promoted. I don't see them now. Oh, yeah.
I've just promoted Andrea.
Yes, um, good afternoon. Uh, this is Fran Bates, and, uh, it, you are correct, it is primarily for indoor entertainment, and, um, um, we do not really see a reason why there would be outdoor entertainment.
Could we, um, actually make that notation where it's, it's restricted inside and not be outside, um, entertainment?
Yes, you could. You could. We could do that.
Should we? Um, okay.
Does that mean that?
It's a question I'm asking, and, and, you know, again.
I mean, do you have an outdoor patio where you'd have been?
Yes, we do have on the Sky Lounge, we have an outdoor patio. It's not very large. Um, and, um, it's on the sixth floor. It's on the top floor. Um, and, and then on the main floor, one of our restaurants has outdoor seating to the central part of our, of the community.
On what side of the building is the outdoor patio?
Um, the outdoor patio, uh, dining is facing Fisher Avenue.
Fisher Avenue.
I guess.
But it, it, it is also a kind of enclosed by a walkway and gazebo, um, to the street.
It's like in a courtyard.
Yes.
Yeah.
So it's not, it doesn't have a lot of exposure to the street, so.
Yeah. Mike?
Uh, well, I actually have a, um, a layout, um, of, and it is, it's essentially an outdoor area that's enclosed, uh, by a walkway.
Is it within the perimeter of the building, or is it, does it? I guess I'm just concerned about sound traveling up the hill. That's my, uh, is it?
Honestly, I, I can't imagine that it will be an issue. Um, this is, we're not gonna, this is not an organization that's gonna have rockets, you know?
Remember, this is a senior facility.
They are, so.
Well, well.
Of our generation, and, you know, our music was pretty loud.
Sixties, like fifties and sixties.
But, okay. My, uh, my concern is, you know, this is not facing the residential, uh, part of this, uh, um, area, is my understanding. And I don't want to, you know, prevent, uh, you know, them from having, you know, radio music, for example, or, or something that, you know, is reasonably, uh, quiet.
And one thing I would say is that the noise, you know, this is not a noise by law waiver, right? So even if there is an authorization to have entertainment outdoors, if it violates the noise ordinance, that's still a violation.
Yeah. So just, I, I think we've, we've had others come before us, uh, asking for entertainment licenses, and we have restricted outdoor entertainment. Um, and we're gonna have, uh, the Irish Hotel tonight, uh, coming before us with an entertainment license. They have outdoor seating, forty seats or so. Um, I'm just, I'm asking us to, to consider being consistent, uh, with, with other, uh, food establishments and entertainment licenses, whether you're in a high-end residential facility or not.
Yeah. I mean, is it consistency we need, or, or responding to specific problems and issues, uh, that would warrant us limiting the, uh, entertainment noise?
I, I guess I'm asking for just, I'm asking us to consider, again, I said, is it possible? Right? You know, we, we should consider, it maybe context is important here, but we should try whenever possible to be consistent with, um, outdoor entertainment license.
Okay, what, uh, John?
I, I have to say, I think Paul raises a good point. Um, if this were, uh, I don't think we would have any doubt, uh, about this if it were, um, a street-facing, uh, restaurant, that we don't want competing music from restaurants next to each other, you know, being, blaring out onto our sidewalks. Um, this happens to be, you know, in, in a brand-new facility, it looks wonderful. Um, and I think it's gonna be a great addition to Brookline. But if I heard correctly, this outdoor patio is sixth floor? Did I hear that stated? Am I right in, in reciting that? Um, and, um, you know, music, if it was played loudly enough, and I don't mean too loudly, I just mean, you know, above a certain volume, on, on a patio on the sixth floor could certainly be heard in the neighborhood. And I don't think we intend here to, um, give a indoor entertainment license that will result in there being complaints from people because of the outdoor noise or sound, uh, emanating from this restaurant.
Any other comments? Okay, so, um, do you want to make a motion?
No, why don't we hear public, why don't we, uh, public, public comment, I, again, I.
Thank you for reminding me. Um, this is a public hearing. Tiffany, Tiffany, would you like to open up the public hearing?
Um, there are currently no speakers signed up in advance to speak on this item. If there are members in the audience or online who would like to speak on this item related to the Newbury of Brookline, if you could either approach the podium or raise your hand using the raise the hand feature online. There are currently twenty-five participants online, and no one is using the raise the hand feature to speak.
Okay, uh, I'll close the public hearing then, and, um, let's first deal with this issue of, uh, condition on the, uh, entertainment license. Um, you want to make a motion?
I guess, um, I would, I'd like to hear from my, my colleagues and see if there's votes here. Again, I don't want to take us down the wrong path, but I, you know, this is, um, a unique facility and a residential neighborhood. Um, you know, we, for other establishments that have had restaurants and seating outside, we've restricted the entertainment to be the inside. You can't have it outside. Um, to John's point, you know, I have a six-story building or a five-story building next to me, and there's a rooftop deck, and I can participate in their conversations, uh, because. because sound does travel. That's my concern. So I, if I would propose restricting the entertainment license to be indoor, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Any, any other comments? Okay, move the vote or approval for Paul's motion to restrict the entertainment license to the indoor areas of the building. John Vanscooyak? On favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Vanscooyak?
Aye.
Mike Sandman?
For personal reasons, I need to abstain.
Okay, David Pearlman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. You got it around the horn.
Okay, and I vote no. Okay, so that passes by a vote of 3-1-1. Okay, next, I'd like to move approval of all three, four, five, six items, unless anyone wants to talk about any of the others individually. I move approval of, first, the question of approving the application for a change of ownership interest. Second, approving the application for a common victor license. Third, approving the application for an entertainment license as amended by, or as conditioned, with the condition that we just voted. Fourth, approving the application for an alteration of premises of the, of the Skyline Lounge. Fifth, approving the application for a change of manager from Philip Barlow to Frances Bates. And sixth, the question of approving the application for, for an alternate manager in the person of Andrea Jean Stewart. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Vanscooyak?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Abstain.
Okay, David, I'm sorry. Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Pearlman?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Next, we have another new all-alcohol license, a common victor license, an entertainment license, and approval of an alternate manager, and inflammas license, which is a parking lot. Don't get upset. And this is a public hearing also, and this is for the Wagner Restaurant Group LLC doing business as the Iris Hotel at 30 Webster Street. And before we start, I'd like to just sort of give some context here. The select board has received some comments from neighbors regarding the hotel asking us to deny or restrict the liquor license. Our authority to deny an alcohol license requires a proper reason for such denial, and of course, is subject to review by the State Alcoholic Beverages Control Board. To obtain a liquor license, the establishment must obtain a license from the town using ABCC forms. Upon filing their application, the town must hold a hearing, which is what we're doing tonight. If we deny the application, it will go to the ABCC for an investigation. If they agree with us, the applicant's next option, as I believe it, is to file suit in Superior Court. If we deny an application, we must provide some reason, some basis for, for that denial. Our local police, building, health, and fire departments have found no basis for denying the license. There are some allegations regarding a previous owner who may have some continuing interest in the hotel, although I don't believe that that can be the basis for denying the license unless someone had some other information respect to its compliance with our laws, et cetera. We can, however, impose reasonable conditions on the license, such as, you know, closing town for outdoor seating, noise issues, trash storage, and removal concerns. And if there are violations, such as an underage drinking, for example, we can take steps to either revoke the license or other appropriate measures. So with that sort of introduction, which is basically saying if we do as many people are asking us to do and deny the license, we have to have a damn good reason for doing it.
Mr. Allen?
I appreciate those comments, Mr. Chair. For the record, my name is Robert Allen. I have a law practice across the street here at 300 Washington Street. Mr. Town Administrator, Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm excited to be here tonight because we have a new hotel in the town. And for those of us that have been involved in politics in Brookline for a number of years, a hotel is something that we've pushed hard for, and now all of a sudden, we're no longer that one, one hotel town that we used to be for, for a number of years. So I'm here representing Wagner Restaurant Group. With me is Wagner Cantania, who is the LLC manager. He's the sole member of the licensed application, as well as a proposed alternate manager. To his left is Eva Kavanaugh, a second proposed alternate manager of record. And to her left is Igor Borikin, the proposed manager of record for the licensed premises. The Iris Hotel is now open for business, as I said. It has 119 guest rooms dispersed among seven, seven guest floors, 17 rooms per floor. It's an extended stay hotel, primarily servicing those in need of business needs or long-term treatment in nearby hospitals, or families of patients who've been admitted. It is anticipated that the typical guest would stay there two to three weeks at a time, and for this reason, each hotel room is equipped with a kitchenette, and there's laundry and gym and other facilities on site. I'll also let the board know that we've been working closely with Commissioner Schute and her team, and we're in the process of making numerous repairs along Webster Street unrelated to the hotel that include replacement of a couple dead trees, installation of bike parking hitches on the existing meters, repairing the chicanes in the sidewalks in certain locations, and some other beautification measures. The request tonight is the application for a common victor's license, which I actually think that we received when we were here last time. However, I think this is a little bit more detailed now because it's actually been built out. There's a, there's a physical location of the restaurant. We know the number of seats and all that. An all-alcohol Section 12 license, which we withdrew at our last hearing for two reasons. At that time, the owner did not have an operator to lease the hotel to, I mean, the restaurant to. And two, we wanted to get further in the construction to get the lobby complete, to see the actual number of seats. The entertainment license, which is TV background music, occasional instrumental from Thursday through Sunday, and alternate manager license, and as the chair mentioned, the inflammable license for storage of, it's all open parking, it's no underdo park, but for, for vehicles on the site. But before I get into that, I want to, I want to just give you a big picture because I know, as the chair mentioned, there was some interest in the location. At the end of my presentation, I'm going to try to assist with, with the board's decision and at least make a recommendation that I think will be helpful. We're a neighbor in the town. We're not here to be controversial in any way. I think it is disappointing that we did have some people come in for tours who were more interested in what country the owner was from than anything about the hotel, which is not Brookline and not something that should be a focus of anything in this town. But the people that we walked through loved it. They really loved the location. One already wanted to book a birthday party for their, for their child at the location. So that positive feedback is great. And, you know, I, I think at some point, I've represented every hotel in this town. And I think when you see this place, and we plan on having a grand opening in September, we'll invite all the town folks and the chamber and all that. But the design inside this place is second to none. I'd also note, every hotel in town does have a liquor license with it. And when you first walk into this lobby here, it's, it's warm, it's comfortable, and it's only get better as you get up to the room. It's hard to believe that this is a former site of a nursing home. And then, as this board may remember, it was a temporary K through five school. It's obvious that a lot of time and detail went into it. We do plan again on having everybody in there September. But what I did do, just because I think it's important, is I put together a quick 30-second video so you could actually see the lobby, see the location, get a feel for it. I think it's great after hearing your last discussion, saying, what's that patio going to look like? I think it's very helpful for you to see exactly what this lobby looks like, so I'm hoping that can tee up. Oh. As long as I don't have to touch anything.
Welcome to the Iris Hotel, Boston. Enjoy your stay. We're fully equipped with the latest in state-of-the-art technology here. We'll have a digital concierge for all of our amenities, the nectar bar, a common room here. We have our pedal restaurant, our one-on-one individualized spa services, facials, massage treatments. We also have our executive business lounge and our laptop and business editor hub here for any printing needs.
You know, it didn't flow as well on my, on this computer as it did on my computer. So they'd show the restaurant for a quick blink, but it's, it's, hopefully you got a little bit of a feel. My apologies for that. It didn't look like that on my computer. So we, we did, we had planned on a soft opening this past weekend, and we actually got pressed into action because of that Microsoft outage. And there were grounded many flights, as you know, at Logan. There were a lack of hotel rooms. Our phones started ringing off the hook, so we wanted to accommodate. So even though we planned that soft opening, it turned into a little bit more than we expected. But everything went relatively smoothly. We obviously still have some things to, to work through. But we were very proud of our staff. We did, we did take a little grief that the hotel bar was there, but the glaring omission that there was no alcohol. It turns out that frustrated folks were more frustrated when they couldn't have a nightcap. But fortunately, many of them just wanted a good night's sleep, and we were, again, happy. We were able to accommodate. Let me just jump into the request tonight. The alcohol common vic entertainment license, as you saw briefly, the restaurant and bar situated in the lobby of the hotel. It'll serve American fare with international specials offered daily. We anticipate this will predominantly be for the folks in there, but we would certainly welcome others to come. There's a total of 69 seats. I think the, the writing listed 49 indoor and 24 outdoor, but it's actually 45 indoor and 24 outdoor, which a total of 69. The proposed hours for the restaurant is 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and for the bar, 10:00 AM to 1:00 AM. By virtue of the entertainment license, the licensee seeks permission to hang television. You saw the television there in the background, play some background music in the lobby, restaurant and bar area, and to have live acoustic and vocal music on Thursday through Sunday, all indoors. Not, we're not, any outdoor entertainment is not, is being proposed here. The restaurant also fulfill all room service requests for both food and alcohol. A proposed menu, refuse, plan, and description of operations have been filed. The kitchen has recently been signed off, actually, maybe a week ago today, from the Health Department. Notices to Director Butters was sent out together with a copy of the legal ad published in the Boston Herald on June 27, 24. The green return receipts have been submitted to the licensing clerk. The people here tonight, the sole manager and member of the proposed Wagner Restaurant Group is again Wagner. He has experience in both the hotel business and liquor industry, having been involved in hotel, restaurant, and management in the New York and Boston area since 1996. Wagner, who is also before the board for an alternate manager application, is over 21, a US citizen, has been crowd management certified, tip certified, and is familiar with the rules and regs of the board, of this board and the Commonwealth. Wagner has met with the Health Department to discuss and review Brookline-specific regulations and requirements, and is familiar with the liquor regulations of the town, as I said. Igor, to his, to, to his left, is the proposed manager of record. Igor has experience in the restaurant industry, having operated along with his wife Blue Salt Restaurant in West Newton since 2021. Igor will be working for the licensee and plans to be on the premises at least 40 hours a week. He's obviously over 21, a US citizen, has been crowd management certified, tip certified, familiar with rules and regs of this board, as well as restaurant owner, as a restaurant owner, he's familiar with the laws within the Commonwealth. Also, we have Eva. She's experienced in the hotel and liquor industry and will be present at all times if either Igor or Wagner cannot be there. Eva is also here for questions if the board has any questions. Again, this town's come a long way since being a one-town hotel. You know, right next door, we have a short-term hotel. We originally talked to the hotel when we first, before we even opened, and they suggested focusing on long-term. They have a lot of desire there. They're not really set up for longer-term care. So we, we thought that was a great fit. We look at ourselves as partner with the Courtyard Marriott. I think it's, it could be very successful there. But, you know, we feel this restaurant, like every other restaurant in the town, should be equipped with a liquor license so that they can serve its patrons, particularly if you're going to be there, stay there for a long period of time. The one thing I would suggest to the board is, I did read some of the emails. Tiffany was kind enough to send them to me. Rather than, you know, wait, don't give them a liquor license, let them open. I feel like you, you know, you'd be starting this business in a little bit of a hole, and I know that's not your intent to. But I also understand that on that side of the table, you have to listen to other people. And if people have concerns, what can we do to address those concerns? What I would suggest to you is, you know, every year, the liquor license has to come renewed. Rather than just doing the typical renewal, why don't you bring us back here in December? Have a hearing for us in December. We'll show you what we've been doing. We'll answer any questions you have. Everybody who has concerns can address any concerns they have. Hopefully, we'll have some letters of support by then. But it gives, it gives us time, granted, a short period of time from now to December, to open, get running, and get things up and running. Gives the board comfort knowing that, hey, they're coming back in December, and they'll have to answer any questions they have. So I suggest to you, that's a better alternative than saying, don't give these people any liquor license. Let's let them stay open for a couple of years. You know, it's tough enough to do business. I don't have to tell anybody that. Allow us to compete with every other restaurant that has, every other hotel that has a liquor license in the town. I'm happy to answer any questions, or I have these three individuals who will be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any, let me just add that not only is opening with a liquor license good for your business, it's also good for the Coolidge Corner area where.
Particularly extended stay, right?
Yeah.
They're not going to eat at our place every night, that's for sure, right?
That's just my opinion. Did you ever hand it up, Paul?
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any other? Mike?
Yeah, so a couple things. First of all, I'm very sorry to hear that there were comments about, you know, where, where somebody originated, where their family originated. That's, that's not the basis for the attention that this application gets. The basis is that the hotel, the original developer of the hotel is a landlord who has had some history. And I think you're, you're aware of that, and when I'm looking at the certificate of organization from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts of the LLC, and that the original developer is nowhere to be found. It's.
That's not his business. He's not in the restaurant business.
And this, the LLC is just organized as of June 9th, 2024. And so this is essentially a separate operation from the developer and, and his interests. Is that correct?
Think of it as a landlord-tenant type of relationship. It's a contractual lease.
All right. And the landlord, obviously, in a restaurant, it doesn't have any interest in.
It's not a percentage interest, or else I would have had to record that on there. It's straight-out lease, and we've submitted the lease terms to the town and to the ABCC.
Right. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Any other discussion from the select board? Okay, this is a public hearing. Tiffany, could you open up the public hearing for us?
Yes. Those who've signed up in advance are Jonathan Davis. Is Jonathan Davis in the room?
Yes.
If you could please approach the podium, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Jonathan Davis. I'm a Brookline resident, 125 Park Street. I'm a town meeting member, precinct 17, which includes Webster Street and the Iris Hotel. I'd like to address the entertainment license. I'd like to most strongly urge that entertainment be restricted to indoors. The application asks for entertainment by radio, recorded music, and TV Saturday through Sunday from noon until 11:00. Instrumental and vocal music, Thursday through Sunday, 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Webster Street is a narrow street, and across from the Iris is a four-story walk-up apartment building and a three-story walk-up apartment building. And together, it appears that they have ten or more rear bedrooms that face Webster Street and the hotel. These buildings are old rental apartment buildings with relatively moderate rents. The tenants of these buildings deserve to not have their residential occupancy, especially on weekends and evenings, disturbed by what the hotel management thinks its guests will appreciate. In the evenings and at night, the neighbors in the walk-up apartments across Webster Street may be trying to sleep, put their kids to sleep, trying to work at home. I think all entertainment should be confined to inside the hotel building, and that. And that, by the way, includes recorded muzak, which I note that this morning was being played on speakers outside the hotel. I have a couple of comments about the application for management, uh, for common victualler and alcohol. I'm not criticizing the, the individuals, but it seems to me that the select board should be going slow to see how things work out with a new hotel that's just getting off the ground. For example, there's another entity, Wagner Hospitality Management, of which Mr. Quintonala is, is the manager. This entity says on its website that in addition to the Iris, it also manages four other hotels, including three on the Cape. In terms of the number of rooms, the Iris would be twenty one percent larger than the biggest of those four other hotels. It seems reasonable to expect that the Iris, just by its size, will present a management challenge. According to the July seventh report of Lieutenant Brother of the Brookline Police Department, Mr. Quinton, Quintonala lives in Bennington, New Hampshire. Google Maps tells me that's two hours away from thirty Webster Street.
You have thirty seconds.
I, I don't know if he's going to be commuting every day from Bennington, but that also, and he also is going to have to manage four other hotels, three on the Cape. And it seems to me that, that he's going to be, uh, stretched pretty thin and there are going to be challenges in terms of management. Thank you.
The next person who signed up in advance to speak is Bruce Levin. You'll have three minutes.
I would just like to give the official petition. Eighty people, not easy to get during vacation. Bobby's were sent to, uh, the select board. I did a little look around the street this week. I spoke with the manager at Prairie Fire, which has a outdoor, a, a liquor license. Nine on weekdays, ten on weekends. I spoke with a Mr. Daniel West, Assistant General Manager of the Courtyard, nine o'clock through and through. Sanctuary deliverables closes, closes at, uh, eight forty five weekdays, six twenty five weekends. I don't know why they should get more than the, uh, others in the area. On the relationships, I have from the Secretary of State's office, Wagner Hospitality Management, Wagner Kintalana. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, sir, as manager. And then you flip the page and it says SOC Signatory on Wa, on Wa Faisal, twelve forty nine Beacon Street. Real property on Wa Faisal, two seventy two Huntington Ave. I think we're a lot closer than we think, but the important thing is there are kids that want to go to sleep. We have old people. We really need things by eight or nine. We don't want to hear it. We don't want them outside. We think that's quite reasonable. I was very impressed on the inside and it doesn't look like the kind of bar where kids gotta go in there and order shots and Long Island iced tea. It was sedate. I think people under forty will probably run out of there screaming. But, uh, this idea of entertainment, including instruments, I think is a slippery slope. If someone from Berkeley wants to play on a regular guitar, Andre Sagovia, that would be great. But a guitar can also be Ted Nugent. Could it be a band with drums and amplification? I don't know, and I think it should be made clear that we are restricting entertainment to only the softest volumes and certainly those, those that will not be heard.
You have thirty seconds.
Outside. What I would actually like to use this for a question to Mr., uh, Mr. Wagner and to Mr. Allen. Things happen. There were problems. People are unhappy. I went in there and I saw there was a concierge desk. Twenty four seven, if there's a problem, can I go in and speak to someone there? So you always have someone at that desk so we can say, could you quiet down?
That concludes your time.
Another one perhaps will have a question to them. Rather than town, I think it will help everyone. And then as I.
Excuse me, um, time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah.
The next person we have to speak is Linda Pelkey, who is online. Linda, I will promote you now.
Can I just say, we can't make viewpoint decisions between Sagovia, Andre Savovia and Ted Nugent. I like Ted Nugent. Just kidding. You know, sometimes.
Linda, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Select Board. My name is Linda Olson Pelkey. I am a town meeting member in precinct seventeen. And as has been mentioned, this, um, hotel does find itself in precinct seventeen. So I am here to support my constituents who signed that petition. And what I know is we're all dancing around the fact that, um, the owner and original developer and person who is still deeply involved, given, what Mr. Levin disclosed about the location of this LLC is that it really is, um, still back to the original, uh, developer and owner overseeing this. And I don't think it is any kind of, um, out of line comment to say that he has a very checkered past with a long history of violations and court actions against him. So I think it's reasonable for the close of Butters, especially being a residential area, to be concerned about noise and what activity is going to be going on here and whether or not the facility really is going to be well managed and controlled. And I share Mr. Davis's concern about the manager being stretched so thin. And I think what the neighbors are really asking for is really careful oversight by the town here. And personally, I don't think it's a unreasonable request to ask to wait and see how well the, um, activities are managed before granting, especially the liquor license, in my opinion. I don't really know that having a, another hearing in such a short amount of time is going to give meaningful, um, oversight and reaction from the community. I don't know that it's enough time to really know. So I would like to request on behalf of the Butters that you not grant the liquor license and wait and see how well this facility is really managed. Thank you.
There are no other speakers, uh, signed up in advance. If there's anyone who would like to speak who's online, please raise your hand using the raise the hand feature. If there's anyone else in the room who would like to speak, please approach the podium. There are thirty three participants online and no one else is using the raise the hand feature to speak.
Okay, then I'd like to close the hearing, um, and have discussion among the select board members. The two issues seem to me that are in contention here. First of all, the liquor license and secondly, the entertainment license. I understood Mr. Allen is saying that their entertainment license is going to be just used indoors. Okay, so, so we can make that as a condition.
We're fine with that condition.
Okay, okay. Secondly, the question of the liquor license. Uh, what, what do people think about that? Uh, David?
I really don't think it makes much sense to hamstring a hotel as it's opening by declining a liquor license. I think that generally when we open hotels, we provide them with liquor licenses or a lot of expectations for patrons to be able to drink liquor at a hotel. So I think that it would, the proposal to come back before the board and review in December how it's gone, I think that's reasonable. But I think we should grant it.
Any other comments? Uh, Paul?
I, I have a couple of questions, Bernard. Thank you. Uh, first about onsite management. Did I hear that there will always be onsite management or?
Twenty four seven.
Twenty four seven, there'll be someone there. If there's an issue, more for the residents, they have a question, there'll be someone that can check them in or they have issues.
Absolutely.
Okay, and then.
Also a condition on, on the ZBA, if we had to submit a, a, a plan that included a twenty four seven, so. There's two bites there.
Thank you. Um, and then the, the, an issue that got brought up by one of the speakers was the, I don't necessarily know if it was the license closing times of various restaurants or what they, when they chose to close. What is, is that, do we know? It's the latter. So the license closing time for, you know, that were mentioned, those, were those normal and typical ten or eleven?
Yeah, um, I, I can actually pull what those are.
Okay, that would be helpful. And then I have one, a couple of comments, Bernard. So, um, first, I, I will tell you today I did go over and visit the hotel. Yep, um, uh, with my baseball hat on and my shorts. And, uh, I, I met a lovely young person at the front desk. Um, the hotel's beautiful. I think you did a great job with it. I walked around it. I didn't go into a room, but I did check out the restaurant, the bathrooms, the business, uh, center. Your, your little bar, I don't even, wouldn't even call it a bar. And, you know, I did walk around and checked out the parking area. The parking drive is a little narrow. That's going to be, uh, interesting. I don't know how you're going to handle that back and forth. But I was impressed by it. Um, I guess that the, a couple of things I would say is, one, I, I would agree that the outdoor entertainment, attorney Allen, if, if you're willing to have that condition, that I think that makes a lot of sense. And I agree, uh, with my, my colleague, uh, Mr. Pearlman, that it doesn't make a lot of sense to hamstring this business, uh, by not giving a liquor license. We actually want hotels, hundred percent commercial, uh, we get meals tax.
Exactly.
Right, that, that this is, you know, this is the type of business that we want to succeed. I did take, uh, the hour to watch you all two years ago. By the way, you all look great. Nothing's changed. I watched the video from, from two years ago and many of these comments were brought up. Actually, it's much more intense. I think there was many more speakers that raised issues, uh, about, about the prior owner, um, or not prior.
It was a hot issue back.
It was a hot issue.
It included a warrant article.
Right, but I do believe at that time, everything was issued except for the liquor license, um, because you withdrew it.
I think you're correct.
That, so the board.
This is a little bit more detailed than it was before.
Okay, so anyway, I'm, I'm inclined to, to support it with the restriction that entertainment stays.
I have a couple of questions, um, that, that came up in the, um, hearing. I, I assume Mr. Quintonila is, is, uh, that's reasonably accurate pronunciation. You're not overseeing all four of your hotels, or are you?
Wagner, come.
Yeah, please go to.
Wagner Quintanilla, that's a tough last name. Yes, I do oversee all the hotels. Can I do that alone? No. I do need a team. It takes a team. So there is a lot of, um, paperwork that I do, but also I visit every site. I appreciate, you know, the feeling of getting too thin. It's always a concern, but, uh, in the hotel business, we work twenty four seven. We never close. It's one of the very few businesses that you have to be there for your staff, for your, um, guests and for, for the neighborhood, for the community. Uh, I can only do with a team and part of my job, big part of my job is to have managers on every hotel that are very capable. And every employee should be empowered to manage the place. Again, alone, no one can do it. I don't believe so. I work, even though it's in New York City and they always change command.
Okay, uh, there's also a, a concern that there were, uh, speakers today, I think today or recently, uh, on the outside, uh.
My, my guess is this, this construction still going on outside? There's, there's a, there's a cantilever going up. So my guess is the construction guys had a boombox or some, something, speakers out there.
Okay.
Bernard?
Yes.
So, uh, I'm looking at an article from the Falmouth Enterprise and let me preface this by saying that I, I don't see any basis for not issuing a liquor license. But, uh, I do want to get it on the, get a couple of things clear, uh, clearly in my own mind. An article from the Falmouth Enterprise, uh, from twenty twenty two, um, saying that, um, Mr. Faisal's company had purchased, uh, two hotels on the Cape. And the last paragraph of the article says, uh, Wagner Quinto, Quintanilla, is that close enough? I'm, okay, I'll try. Wagner Quintanilla, an associate of Alpha Management, said the building needed to be renovated and so forth. But, uh, the associate of Alpha Management caught my eye.
Well, it's, I think it's the way the reporters reported the story more than, more than anything. He's a separate entity. He's, he comes in to manage it.
Right, uh, and you manage other, uh, restaurants in, uh, Mr. Faisal's.
Alpha Management is all residential. He's one of the larger property owners.
Oh, I know.
But in the city, but, but, and Wagner has nothing to do with any residential units. He just, he, he brought in as a, as a contractor at Wagner Hospitality to run these, uh, hotels, which I think are up to four.
Okay, and those are, uh, nonetheless owned by Alpha Management, the hotels?
Well, a different entity.
Within the same corporate umbrella?
Ultimately, the same.
All right, uh, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that we're very clear as to.
Falmouth just extended his hours, by the way, till one, one AM just two weeks ago.
You, you go to the, go to the microphone.
No, he, he's just going to say, we, they had the license for two years and they, they just increased the hours of operation. It was eleven and now it's one.
Okay, I think what, um, Mike mentioned or found, uh, by Googling while meeting. It is important, I don't think it's relevant to, um, to this, to the license or anything else. But, I mean, it's, it's, it is important that people not be, uh, or not believe, or it's important that people know that there is that connection with someone who is very, has been very controversial, uh, in the Boston area, uh, including in Brookline. Although, uh, it is, I was going to say, although in Brookline, not as controversial as, as in Boston, but there's still that feeling. That's just not something that you should go around hiding because people are going to think there's something going on, uh, that, that you're covering up some.
Did I hear you say in your presentation that the bar hours were ten AM to one AM?
That's what I.
I don't, I don't think I see that in the application.
Okay.
But maybe I'm missing it. I see, you know, I see the common Vic hours, but I don't see a separate request to have the bar open in those hours.
Chaz, what are, what are the hours for other, for the hotel next door?
Hotel next door is the Marriott Courtyard.
I testify that nine days.
Yep, that, that may be, Bruce, that may be, are you?
Yeah, that may be their choice as opposed to.
When they close versus what they're licensed for. That's all I'm trying to get at.
Yeah.
I have to find the, uh, doing business as there and pull that. It will take me a second.
I do think we should be consistent. Um, one AM seems.
And also the board is not currently issuing licenses past midnight.
Right.
Good cause.
Right.
Given the, so, wanted to be sure.
The other comment, well, Chaz is Googling or searching. I, I do want to mention, Bernard. My daughter actually manages a hotel in Fenway. And there is, uh, and they're not an extended stay hotel. And there is often pressure for them to try, to help, uh, support, uh, uh, medical visitors that are here for extended stays, for cancer treatments, Children's Hospital. So there is a, a great need in the market.
Yeah.
You know, for that. And I know there's been, um, uh, some organizations that have purchased some, some homes and, uh, bigger homes in Brookline and are providing that type of service. But it really is an important service that's needed, uh, for extended stays, for, for medical treatments and the longevity.
And we're fine if we don't have one AM out of the gate. If the board wants eleven PM out of the gate, we're fine with eleven PM out of the gate. The, the one thing I'll say is a little bit different than a restaurant is we have all these rooms that are all there, right? People are there. They're not, you know, driving anywhere. They're there, they're staying there, tend to hang at the bar area a little bit longer. So.
Yeah, the courtyard.
Like to have one AM, but we can always ask that in December when we come back, so.
The courtyard's current hours are Monday through Saturday, ten AM to twelve AM. Sunday, because the blue law is twelve PM to twelve AM.
Right.
So that would, if you did that, that would be an.
We're fine with that.
Okay.
So we'll be consistent with.
That would be consistent with the hotel. It also, the nearby hotel would also be consistent with your current kind of moratorium.
And what are those hours again?
Sorry, ten AM, Monday through Saturday, ten AM to twelve AM. Sunday, twelve PM to ten, to twelve AM. So twelve AM closing.
Okay, uh, any other comments?
One other point, Bernard. Um, as Bobby, as I did say, I, I did visit the, the hotel today and I walked all around. I didn't see any construction going on. So, um, I would, uh, perhaps revisit and ask you to double check if there's a wired speaker trying to create some ambiance outside the hotel. We, you know, unless it's for an announcement, it's like, you know, leave the bill. Um, we, you know, unless it's for an announcement, it's like, you know, leave the building, that thing should not be producing, uh, music.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I was just guessing.
You should know better.
We'll take care of that.
Okay, any other, uh, discussion from the select board? Uh, John?
Yeah, uh, and, uh, this is not really covered in the licenses that we're going to vote on tonight, um, but I can't help but just ask the question because I did hear a discussion of the, uh, that there would be an onsite, uh, desk person, um, at, at all hours. Is that, is that in fact guaranteed?
Guaranteed.
Guaranteed.
Required by the ZBA decision.
It is?
It is.
Good, yeah, and, and the only reason I'm bringing it up is, um, who would have thought, uh, that hotels are now, um, adopting the practice of not having someone on the desk? Um, and those who have the misfortune sometimes of arriving at like 1 AM because of a schedule, of a, a flight that didn't arrive on time, or you name it. Um, this, this whole case was written up in one of the newspapers just this week. Um, if they aren't given the right password, they can't get into their hotel and they can't get into their room. Um, you know, and the thought of having an operation that would leave people stranded on the sidewalk because they can't get in at 1 o'clock in the morning is not something I would welcome.
To Paul's point, we do anticipate that there'll be a lot of LMA vi- visitors that, uh, that will be staying there. So those hours are going to be really strange. So it's going to be important for us to have people there.
Yeah, good.
Understand that.
I'm, I'm glad the ZBA thought of that, and I just want to make a quick comment about the town meeting members who, um, who.
They were the ones who thought of it, the town meeting members.
Well, good for them. I was just going to, I was just going to add, add a little bit of praise, um, in their direction. I, I, I'm not going to agree with them, um, on this, and in other words, I'm going to, to vote to approve of these licenses. Um, but I, I think everybody recognizes, um, they're, they're doing, um, their level best to look out for the interests of people in the neighborhood, including people in the immediate vicinity of the hotel. And they've raised some good questions. Um, I, I think, um, we're ready to vote approval of this, and I appreciate the offer, uh, that Mr. Allen made, that, uh, we could, they might come back as soon as December, just so that we can see how things are going. And if there's any issues that do crop up between now and December, um, people will have a chance to, um, make that known, uh, very soon. Um, and I think it'll be a beneficial, um, bit of pressure, um, on the new ownership to, uh, excuse me, the new management to, uh, make sure that, um, nothing occurs that would get in the way of this license being renewed the next time we have to vote on it.
Okay, any other discussion from the, uh, David?
Just going back to the noise issue that was raised earlier, uh, as mentioned in the context of the Newbury, we still have the noise bylaw. So Segovia versus Nugent, that's taken care of with our noise bylaw.
Um, any other comments from the select board? Okay, so let's, uh, let's vote.
Okay, um, we can vote them all together. I'll just explain, uh, the variations, um, from the, uh, agenda. Um, I'm more of approval of, uh, the application for an all alcoholic beverages license, uh, subject to the condition that, um, uh, they will, the hotel or the restaurant will return to the select board, uh, with a hearing in December, uh, to, uh, I guess renew or re, review the liquor license? Okay, um, we're, we're not, we're not approving it again. We're just reviewing it, and if there's a problem, we have the, the tools to address that problem. Uh, and secondly, approving the application for a common victual license, uh, for the hotel restaurant. Uh, thirdly, approving the application for an entertainment license on the condition that the entertainment is inside the building. Uh, fourth, approving the application for an alternate manager, Eva Elena Kavanaugh and Wagner Quintanilla. Uh, and, uh, let's see, fifth, approving the application for an inflamables license at, uh, at the hotel, which is an outdoor parking area.
That's correct.
Okay, we, we haven't discussed that. I assume there's no, there's no issue there. Uh, all in favor, please.
Two, two, two quick edits. One is the proposed seating for the common victory license. The fourth number seats indoors is 45, not 49. And then the hours of operation for the bar would be Monday through Saturday, 10 AM to 12 AM, Sunday, 12 PM to 12 AM.
Okay.
And there's also a stipulation that entertainment will only be inside.
Yes, indoors only.
And Mr. Borkin, as manager, you said that? Did I?
No, I, I said the indoor piece. I did not, uh, mention the hours.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, um, uh, amendment to my, uh, motion, uh, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyak?
Aye.
Um, the, uh, I'm sorry, Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Furman?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, next, uh, we have another public hearing, a noise bylaw waiver. Uh, question of approving a noise bylaw waiver for the Pierce Park Overpass, the bridge over, uh, School Street, uh, coming down, uh, work to happen on Saturday, August 10, from 10:30, uh, 8:30 AM to 8 PM, uh, with a backup, uh, weather day of August 17. Uh, is there someone? Oh, I see, uh, Adam Keane, okay. So tell us about the, uh, the bridge tear down.
Yes, yes, um, yes, I will. Um, hi, guys. My name is Adam Keane. I work with Left Field. We're the owners, project managers for the new Pierce School. Um, as part of the demolition for, uh, the Pierce School, we are, uh, need to take down the pedestrian bridge that goes over School Street. Uh, we are proposing this noise ordinance, like Bernard had mentioned. Um, we, for August 10th, um, and it is actually from, uh, 7 AM to 9 PM is, is the window of time. Um, then, um, we are asking for this because we're going to have a, a very large crane, uh, um, set up in the street. And, um, dismantling that bridge, the bridge will be, um, picked off, uh, the street will be closed. Um, the, uh, bridge will be laid down on the street. It'll be cut in half and then, um, trucked away all in the same day. So, uh, we do need a 14-hour window for this. Uh, the first proposed date is August 10th. Uh, we have also allowed for a rain date or a weather date for August 17th. Um, I'll also go on to say that we have had, um, initial conversations with the building department, the traffic department, uh, the fire department, but we have a, another meeting this Thursday with, uh, police, fire, uh, traffic in the parks, uh, group to discuss this with more detail.
Hey, thank you. Any, uh, questions, uh, comments from the select board? Uh, Paul?
Yeah, I just have questions about the, uh, the method that it's, it's going to be taken down. You're going to have a tall crane. Um, is this thing being, uh, it's not being eaten by one of those, uh, eating machines that we see that spew cement all over the place? Is it going to be cut and lifted? How, how is it going to happen?
Yeah, there's actually, so, uh, there's going to be a 250-ton, uh, hydraulic train, uh, train that'll be set up in the street. Um, first operation is we got to take the glass out of the, um, um, uh, of the, um, uh, bridge itself, right? We remove the glass first, just so it's not as messy as we're taking it down. Then it's cut loose and it's like a, it's very large frame, right? So we'll pluck it, so to speak, with this crane and it'll lay it down. Um, and then once on the ground, it'll be cut with torches and, uh, in two pieces. And then those two pieces, um, the crane will then pick one piece up, put it on a flatbed truck, take it out of there. Similarly with the other one. There is a tower on the park side that will also be demolished that day. And that part will be, um, uh, crushed, if you will. Um, it's, it's kind of like an ex, an excavator that has a thumb on it. And, um, um, you know, uh, the, the word that you use kind of, uh, eaten is, um, somewhat accurate.
Well, is that thumb like a, uh, hydraulic jack or is it actually a crusher?
It's a, it's a, it's, it's a thumb and it is a hydraulic jack. So it just, as opposed to, um, an excavator that scoops, this one, uh, does have a crunching motion and it's a very typical tool, uh, for demolition.
And are we spraying, is there, what are we doing for dust and?
We'll definitely have dust control. We'll have, um, um, hoses, uh, from local hydrants that will make sure that the dust is, is taken down and everything will be cleaned up. Uh, we'll make sure that we have, uh, proper, um, police details to support this as well. Um, we are looking to do this on a weekend and in the summertime, uh, because we feel like traffic will be, um, the least, um, impactful. And, um.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mike?
Um, I, I, I just want to check on, um, you're putting a fairly heavy piece of equipment on the street to do this. Um, it, it, do you anticipate that the street will need any repair? Is there going to be, uh, usually with these, um, uh, these, uh, devices you have, uh, some, uh, sort of legs that come out, uh, with a flat, uh, surface underneath them that bear down on the road? Uh, what do you, what do you anticipate as far as the street's concerned?
There, there definitely will be some cribbing that, um, to support that in the street. And, um, yes, the crane does have some outriggers or are extending arms to, uh, give the crane both balance, but also dissipate the weight of this crane. Uh, we are very, um, aware of the utilities in the street. There, um, if you were out, if you walked it today, um, we have had it all dig safe. There's a lot of paint on that road because there's a lot of utilities in that road, but we definitely do need to be mindful, uh, not to, um, damage the road, uh, or the utilities below it. We will ultimately replace that road, um, uh, repave that road, um, uh, redo, uh, many of the utilities, including the sidewalks, but that'll be, uh, sometime.
Right, the street is going to be re-engineered, redesigned really for, uh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, with raised tables and, and different crosswalks and different, uh, biking lanes, et cetera.
Right, okay, thank you.
But immediately you, you'll temporarily repair the road?
Uh, we will protect the road, um, such that we don't need to repair it. But if there were an instance that we did do damage, we will, of course, be responsible for that and, um, repair.
Great, John?
I just have a couple of questions. There seems to be a discrepancy between what is, um, on the agenda and what is in the application. The agenda says 8:30 AM to 8 PM, uh, but I heard, um, what was recited was 7 AM to, uh, I think.
9 PM.
To, to 9 PM, is that right?
It's in the memo, actually.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
That's just an error on our end on the, on the, um, the, uh, agenda. It's our, that's our, on the office's side. We apologize for that. The, the application was submitted for 7 to 9.
7 to 9 is, is the request?
Is the request.
Okay, uh, okay, well, I mean, you know, 7 seems awfully early, um, on a Saturday, but if 14 hours are required, um, it seems to me we're, I don't want to screw up, um, the plans to get this done in one day. So, um, if, if we can take, uh, you know, that, on good faith, that that's what's required, I think, um, I'd have to say yes to this.
So a question that, uh, some people will ask or have asked, uh, how are you, how are you recycling this, uh, bridge?
Um, it's a, uh, the bridge itself, and you could see this very clearly by looking at it, is a heavy steel frame. And, um, it will definitely be, uh, recycled, all of the steel there. And, um, the components of the tower are brick and concrete. Those will be recycled as well. But the steel will be a hundred percent recycled and, um, there's good, um, um, financial reason to do it.
Yeah, okay, this, anyway.
Maybe we could, uh, knit it back together and put it over the Dave, over Davis path.
All right. Um, Paul?
One other question. Um, so it, is this a public hearing for?
Yes.
What notices?
We haven't opened the.
What note, yeah, what notices went out, um, uh, to the public? Were the butters notified in writing? How did, how did the notice happen?
We, um, we have, uh, not a notice, not specifically a butters to this, um, other than we do have a weekly newsletter where we talk about, um, major events like this.
Yes, I'm rather surprised that we didn't notify a butters that we're going to be doing this. That, that actually concerns me. Maybe we won't hear from anybody in the public hearing because they, they don't know about it. Um, normally and typical, if you're going to bring in a giant crane, shut down the street, uh, violate the noise bylaw, act for an exception, uh, you would notify the immediate butters. Um, that's concerning to me. Frankly, I, 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 I would want to see them, uh, actually notify the butters before I'm inclined to go approve.
John?
I, I was unaware of what Paul just raised. Isn't that legally required? Because my next question was going to be if there was legal notification of the butters, did it tell them that the request was for 8:30, um, AM to, I forget what, uh, 8 PM? Or did it tell them it was for 7 AM to 9 PM?
So the noise bylaw, um, does, it requires them to give a special, you know, they need a special permit. Um, and the application simply requires that it be on an, uh, the appropriate form, uh, available at the office, uh, that a hearing be held. Um, but the, um, you know, they are, there's no requirement that a butters be notified for a noise bylaw waiver hearing.
Hmm, that's, uh, that's something we ought to correct.
Well, it's, it's not just, it's, this is unusual. Noise bylaw may be, you know, uh, N star out on the street, you know, digging something up, but this is different. This is a major construction effort to shut down the street, bring in a giant crane. Uh, this, this seems more than just making some extra noise.
Adam, did you, I mean, there are only a couple of butters, other than the apartment buildings, uh, block away. Uh, aren't you in contact with the, uh, owners of the houses along, um, School Street?
Some of them. We have in the past, uh, distributed flyers to all of them, um, including other businesses in the area, right? Um, when we first started, uh, we walked around a bunch of flyers and talked to some. Um, we have not, uh, done that yet, but we certainly could, and as early as, uh, before the end of this week.
Hi, this is, uh, Lap Yan from the building department. Uh, we, we, if, uh, we can definitely do, uh, uh, acknowledgement of this work, we can create a flyer and we can certainly distribute it to, uh, to the butters.
Uh, David?
I would suggest that such notification be done as a part of the vote that we're about to take, or that we be given a certainty of a date by which notice could be distributed. I do understand, though, to some extent, why notice hasn't happened yet because absent our vote for the noise bylaw waiver on this, then maybe a different date would be selected or a different time. And so you don't want to be noticing something that, then the date suddenly changes. That would defeat the purpose.
Yeah, okay, uh, Chaz, can we, uh, vote to approve the, uh, noise bylaw, um, conditional on, um, uh, notice to the butters within, you know, a week or so?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd actually, I'd like to amend that and say that we're scheduled for the 6th. I'd like to, I'd like to have, uh, a, another public hearing. We can correct the mistake that was made on the public notice in our agenda, um, and give the butters the opportunity to come and be heard. I, I, I think we're, we're sending the wrong, we're starting off this project not well if we're not alerting the butters that a giant crane is going to come in and do some demolition and shut down the street and they haven't been properly noticed. I'm concerned about that.
So, so the, uh, the issue is a noise bylaw. The noise bylaw doesn't require a notice according to Chaz. Uh, so it would, it would be kind of unusual for us on the fly to create a condition, uh, of, of notification like that.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I, I can tell you this, I feel funny about this. I'm uncomfortable with, with shutting down the street, bringing in a major piece of equipment, dismantling a major structure across the roadway. And noise bylaw or not, we haven't noticed, provided any notice, uh, to the, to the butters. And I could be, I could be wrong, I mean.
What, what notice is required to shut down the street and do the other things that are required to remove this? And so, because there's the noise bylaw issue on one hand, and then there's the shutting down the street, bringing in the crane and all that, on the other hand.
Right, and that's been, that, that I understand has already been taken care of as part of the general grant of being able to conduct construction activities on that site.
And does that include any notice?
I mean, the notice, you know, the notice is that, you know, on periodic occasions, School Street may need to be closed on a temporary basis in order of these things. I mean, the notice, you know, the notice is that, you know, on periodic occasions, School Street may need to be closed on a temporary basis in order of these things through. That's my understanding.
John?
Uh, I I get where Paul's coming from, but um I I I'm going to stick with, you know, my inclination, which is to say yes to this request. Um, I I do hope um that uh the the those in charge of this project um will uh take note that we don't want a pattern to develop of oh, the Pierce um school community knows all about this, but the neighbors don't know about it. And I have seen that happen in a couple of instances, I'm sorry to say. And yes, there's a website where the Pierce School Community has been well alerted. They because they're, you know, they're they really want to follow this closely and they can follow it closely at the website. But the fact that there exists that website is not a substitute for um the kind of notification you expect when we're talking about a disturbance of the public peace for fourteen straight hours. Um, and I think a better effort has to be made. I've personally been a witness to a transportation board hearing, um which the notice identified a street incorrectly. So if you read the notice, you couldn't even know that your street might be affected. And then another entire street that was going to be affected by what was being requested of the transportation board was not even included um in the information that was shared um as to what was before the transportation board. And that led to some consequences, you know, where there ended up being an appeal to the select board. So a better job has to be done of getting the word out on um anything that might in the neighborhood, not just in the Pierce School Community, but in the neighborhood. Uh, mi- might indicate to people, might cause people to inconvenienced um um or disturbed or um want to know. You know, people need to know when they're going to have to change their plans for getting back and forth and so on. So I I just want to put that on the record.
Thank you. Uh, Mike?
So I I um listening to this discussion, I think, well, first of all, uh, the hours that we put out were that we put in our agenda incorrect. So there's some question as to what we can do with that. Um, the um, but I really, Paul made a really apt point. This is a a very significant project right in the heart of town in a busy area. There are going to be lots of interruptions, lots of situations where uh the public is going to be inconvenienced. This won't be the first time that street gets closed. Uh, and uh I I think we do have to start off on the right foot by letting people uh know. And if we're, you have meeting on the sixth, let's let's go through the um, let's jump through all the proper hoops here and 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 do this right.
Bernard, I um
Oh, Paul?
Can I add something? So I one of our crack uh attendees uh a note um saying that the by law, in fact, says that a person a person seeking such a permit should make a written application to the Board of Selectmen or Designee. The town will make all reasonable efforts to notify all direct abutters prior to the date of the selectmen's meeting at which the issuance of the permit will be heard.
Mm hmm.
I don't think we've actually made our best efforts, reasonable efforts at this point. We've noticed it improperly and a newsletter from the construction manager is not appropriate notice.
Yeah. I think that's fine. If you if that's the well, if that's the direction the board wants to take on
That's my direction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Agree.
Okay, anyone object to that? Sorry, Adam, we're gonna take this up again.
That's okay. We understand. Um.
And you you you'll still have four days to um between our approval and you're getting your crane out there. I assume that you can handle the logistics of doing that.
Yes, we can. And and we're gonna um uh so I understand this correctly. We'll we'll notice with uh flyers um and mailings um to local butters, um a notice that says uh contingent on board approval on August sixth. Um, uh, we will be looking to demo bridge on August tenth with the rain date of the seventeenth. Does that sound acceptable?
Yeah, and I would add, please add the that there'll be a public hearing and note notice by the select board and give the date and time.
Yeah.
Very, very good. We will.
Thank you.
Okay, so so if if the select board office, it's not the select board. If the select board office is supposed to give the notice, um, how are we?
Historically, what we have, what we've done in this instance is we've if these applications usually come from the utility companies, that's where it's been. We've usually, if it comes from a private entity, we ask that the private entity take on the responsibility of taking on that notice. Um, and then if it's the utility company, they usually do that as well. And we ask for proof that they've been notified.
Okay.
That's what we use on those instances.
So to make sure that the select board office has um proof of of your uh giving notice to all the butters and um I assume that in
That's usually, that's usually, that's usually just a list of the addresses that we that we visited or we had ensured we mailed things out to.
Well, I'm I'm wondering how broad is that uh is the area that we give notice to?
I can check with DPW about where their range is. Um.
Because it's not just a question of of the noise. It's a question of who's going to be impacted by the shutting down of the road. I mean, like the
Every driver and goes through that part.
Right. Well, or or who parks in their in their um garage.
Right.
On the street.
Right, yeah. I think that, right, and right, this question of reasonable efforts and notice is one that we have come up against in the past, which is that when there's no firm requirement, sometimes people say, well, what's the, you know, what is the reasonable requirement?
Well, there's a warrant opening up. We could make an adjustment and fix this.
That's exactly what I was gonna say.
Well, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, you know, I seem to recall that there have been circumstances where there has been a um very specific requirement as to within a radius of what whatever, you know, they have to be notified. I I I'm just puzzled that this exists in some kind of a gray zone that um that it is not already established. What are the requirements here?
And I think we can, we are happy to dig into this some more. You know, the noise by law waiver only came in, the modern version of it, as I understand it, came into effect in two thousand and eight. And the one, the the viewing public can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's when this version of the by law came into effect. And what it said at that point was exactly what Paul quoted, which is it actually doesn't even necessarily need to be a hearing unless the select board thinks there's like, there's the possibility of controversy. Your practice has just been, look, we're gonna hold a hearing for everything because that way people have the opportunity to be heard um and so forth. So that's really where this has kind of come stemmed from, is this original version of the by law.
I'm sorry, Bernard. May I just follow up? Um, because I'm thinking back to what we went through with Chestnut Hill Realty and Hancock Village and uh wow, I mean, the comparison to this, there's no comparison. We you know, there were, we we were talking about, you know, very specific radiuses, identifying which houses might be impacted by the noise from the construction vehicles and blah, 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 blah.
There I thought it was about, you know, the the question of notice wasn't necessarily in play there. There was the question of remediation, mediation or mitigation, right? Like what's what was the appropriate mitigation steps to take in order for you to grant the waiver?
Yeah.
Ultimately, we couldn't reach
And I wanted to add a note of levity, if I may.
Sure.
Permission to add a note of levity. We also, uh, the wording we used was question of approving a nose by law waiver. So uh, some people may have thought this
I noticed that. I just didn't want to raise that.
Some people may have thought this had to do with odors from construction, you know.
Wait, uh, Mike had his hand out.
Uh, that, no, I just, that's fine. Uh, chest, the thing with Chestnut Hill Realty was a much it was a huge scale uh of difference between what this is and that.
But we do, but we, you know, we have something coming down the pike. It's called Waldo Durgan that is going to be in the heart of Coolidge Corner.
Yeah.
Uh, surrounded by residences uh of
Oh, I had no
shapes inside. But I guess my my the reason, my point is this, it we, there is a great opportunity to uh file uh uh an amendment to this uh to this noise by law and just make it clear uh that a notice has to go out. There has to be a public hearing. We can define what the radius is of, define what
Normal, yeah, normal.
Normal thing, so.
Okay, so um, have we had our public hearing? Oh, open up. Let's see if anyone
We just postponed it, didn't we?
I think you could, I think you should postpone.
Okay.
And again, folks are here. Yeah. But obviously, if folks, you know, are
Yeah, I was thinking
The email address is always, right.
Yeah.
But otherwise, we will postpone this to a August sixth.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Adam.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll see you on the sixth.
Okay. Hey, next, diversity hiring update. Information on the Town of Brookline's diversity hiring provided by the Director of Human Resources.
Anne is with us online, so I'm going to promote Anne now. And Lloyd is also with us online. And I'm also promoting Lloyd. You've now both been promoted.
Good evening, everyone. This is Anne Baga, HR Director for the Town of Brookline. Um, I am going to present some information with Lloyd Fellino on the employment report for the first half of calendar year twenty twenty four and the end of fiscal year um twenty twenty four. So, um, you're seeing the full slide?
We're seeing it in your review, Anne, and not in the presentation view.
Okay.
If you click on display settings, Anne, it might switch the view for us.
I'm on best appearance.
Do you see the presenter view screen?
Yeah, okay.
I can also share for you.
Yes, would you do that, please?
Sure.
I'm sorry.
No problem. We'll use this view for now.
Yeah, that's right. Um, next slide. So in the last six months, we've had forty nine new hires across fifteen departments, including um twenty two females and twenty six males. Um, encompassed in that group is six firefighters and five police officers. We've hired twelve mid managers, including our ATA for Operations Tiffany, our Communications Officer, um Christina, and our Language Access Coordinator Ahmed, and various IT related positions, both in um IT as well as um in other departments such as Public Works. Two nine one one operators and um both a rec and engineering director, um some librarians and public works employees. Next. Um, the new hires in the last six months, total forty eight. Um, by uh gender, we're slightly over half and half, um male to female. Um, and we have uh approximately um well, a quarter are are um non-white um people of color and um both Asian, Hispanic, Native American or other, and African American or black. Um, where our our black hiring is at eleven percent and Hispanic at eight. Um, our Caucasian population for new hires is seventy five percent. Next slide. Departures in the last um six months have been a total of forty four with the race being seventy one percent Caucasian, eleven Hispanic, and eighteen black. One of the things that the select board asked was in one of our last reports was what were the reasons for people leaving? And sixty eight percent of those left for another position or resigned, twenty three percent retired. And nine percent either were discharged or for another, were left for another reason. Public safety hires, um, all of the um uh fire hires were white males and the police officers um total five here, but we also had a lateral um that came in. So um three males, two females, and um the inclusion in the new hires were one Hispanic and one black or African American. And these were done through the civil service system. Um, not from the other soon to be new process. Continuing activities is reviewing job descriptions and including the the essential qualifications, looking to disconnect our job descriptions from um specific um higher education requirements where appropriate and reviewing them through a diversity and equity lens. Continue to use clear company and diversity jobs to advertise as well as an MA and mass hire, which is the state portal. We assist departments to manage recruiting, particularly if they're looking to hire multiple roles at the same time. And we encourage networking with professional organizations and affinity groups through LinkedIn, um Facebook, um and other social networks. Promoting jobs at colleges and universities through our um online network called Handshake. And where we've needed to using recruiting firms with a proven record to ensure diverse applicant pools and recruiting passive applicants um as well as using a diverse hiring and interview committee. Um, and working with departments on having the standard set of of questions, which is best practice. Um, so that folks are um staying focused on the requirements of the position and not anything else. Next slide. I think that's the end.
I think that was the end, Anne.
Okay. Thank you, Tiffany.
You're welcome.
One question I have. You mentioned uh in one of the slides that a certain percentage or number were discharged or other reason. Could you go into more detail about the other reasons?
Um, in in order to not um individualize uh a reason, um, it is um we'll call it not voluntary. Um, not all of them were listed in in UNICEF as a discharge, so um.
Just to clarify my question, I didn't mean go into the specific reasons of why each person was discharged, but I thought that discharged or other reason implied other reasons such as retirement or getting another job somewhere else, those sorts of reasons.
So so I had those, I had retirement and other jobs as as a category. Um, I had to use other where the department did not um categorize the reason for the person leaving.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Paul?
Thank you, Bernard. Uh, thank you, Anne. A quick question. The I don't know if you have this information, but the 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 hiring profile. Um, do we have a sense or do we track um how many of those individuals are residents versus non-residents? How many are living in town?
Um, as far as employees?
Yep. New hires.
Um, we, I believe we ran that when when the last report came out, but um I can get back to you on that. I believe it's um it's well below half, but I'll get you a number.
Yeah, it would be helpful to have that. And then my my second Yeah, it would be helpful to have that. And then my second question, and this is outside of the scope of your current report, but as essentially a volunteer government, we rely heavily on boards and commissions. And have we had any consideration to expand, you know, this type of data collection for the makeup of boards and commissions?
How can you address that?
Go ahead, Lloyd.
Yes, excuse me, Paul. Yes, we do that actually yearly. We're actually finishing up the report. And we should have that online into your office, I would say, within the next three weeks. We're just tightening up the data and the report itself.
Okay.
But we do it annually.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions?
I guess I have one more, Bernard. So what are we doing to try to change our, increase our diversity of our of our workforce?
Anne? Lloyd, you have an answer?
Let Lloyd start, since I spoke most of it.
Yeah, well, the activities that Anne mentioned, I think, are very important ones that we do already. In discussing this with Anne, I also think that we need to make a more concerted effort to make sure that diversity inclusion questions are asked for all of our hires, not just for management, but also line stuff as well. It helps to build and maintain the culture, and it's a lot easier to bring, to have that culture or that sort of mindset coming in, rather than trying to develop it through training programs, which we know changes behavior, but doesn't necessarily change mindset. So I think that's a really important aspect of it. In my conversations with Uber drivers and stuff, they're always asking about jobs in Brookline, and I love to know if we have a portal. They were not aware that we have a portal that you can actually look up if the town is hiring. I think one of the things we can do there is just to make sure that we're advertising that out, that out. And important, too, is when we start doing a pop-up tent events again, that we actually have job descriptions and where we go, so we can actually give those out to people and say, hey, you know, the town's hiring, you may be interested in these positions. So I think those are sort of more grassroots stuff that we can be doing more of. But I do think that, you know, sort of making sure that anyone who comes in for to in Brookline or elsewhere knows that the diversity inclusion questions are important, and we weigh heavily when we make our hiring decisions. So.
So Lloyd, do we, it's okay if I ask a question, Bernard? Lloyd, do we, and do we have a sense of how many employees are coming from referrals? From existing employees? And do we have a referral incentive with employees to refer folks that they know in their communities?
So, we don't have a referral incentive. I'll start with the last question first. And we get some information on the applications as far as how they heard about the position. It could be that it's our employee referral, it could be, you know, the website, and it allows, the website allows us to track click-throughs, as the term is called. It is, it is helpful to have referrals. The challenge can be with referrals is that you could end up with more more folks who look like the folks we have. And if the source of the referrals, depending on, you know, I have a diverse group of people I connect with, but others may not have a diverse group of people, and so they may be recommending folks who look like them or think like them. And that, it can be a double-edged sword.
Or related to them.
Well, that's a tougher challenge because of, you know, the nepotism rule, but, you know, it could be across departments. And, but, but it is, it is, it is a mixed blessing with referrals. And it can be, it can pose management challenges as well when folks get on board.
Did you have your hand up?
No.
Oh, sorry. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Next, Rodent Control Action Plan, presentation by Director of Public Health and Human Services, Sigala Reese.
Good evening. Thank you. Sigala Reese, Director of Public Health and Human Services, here for an update on our Rodent Control Action Plan. I have a brief presentation, but a lot more detail in the memo provided, and we can get into questions and specific questions after. So just a little background, you know, how we got here. In short, many urban areas began to see an increase in rodent activity in areas historically where activity wasn't seen. Much of this is due, as we know, to changes in our behavior during and after the pandemic. Wherever there are people, rats are sure to follow. Factors such as climate change, urban development contribute to their presence. Shorter, warmer winters due to climate change create ideal conditions for rats to thrive. Urban development with its construction activities and lack of natural predators also push rats above ground. Rats carry diseases. The actual risk to the public is relatively low in Massachusetts. For instance, hantavirus is very rare in our state, and those at higher risk are veterinarians, sewer workers, and farmers. But with that, the general public faces a minimal risk and can take precautions, such as things like avoid vacuuming and sweeping rodent waste and really using gloves and, you know, wiping solution to clean up. Outlined here on the slide were our recommendations in October of twenty-two thousand and two, and I'll highlight a few in the presentation here. But again, a lot more details and open to discuss the process and where we are with a lot of these recommendations. So a big tool that we have in our toolbox, community-wide, is the Modern Smart City System. And here you can see on this graph, which we report monthly on the website, is the amount of catches we get in that system. It was deployed in December of twenty-two, and like I said, we have a live map on the website and report it monthly. As of this morning, we had one thousand seventy-eight catches. And we continue to evaluate this and change the location of the box in the sewer pipe systems. It's really two systems out there. And some of the increases that you might see month to month are related to location changes, and you can really see that in January where we implemented the program, and then at the beginning of this calendar year, did another big reshuffle, and you see a big uptick in activity. Decreases month to month, we're hoping are because of decreases in activity. And of course, seasonal factors, too. In the cooler months, tend to see less rodent activity. So working with our food establishments, one of the key things identified during inspections was a need for more training on what staff and food service workers can look for to reduce rodent harbage in and around their restaurants. Working with Burger Food Safety, we hosted and recorded trainings for food establishments in June. We continue to share the recordings in English and Spanish and provide tools like checklists and self-assessment tools in English, Spanish, and Chinese for our food establishments. We also continue the inspection program. In addition to our routine food safety program, these are specific inspections focused on rodent control. Regional staff is now out training with Burger Food Safety in the field, in these, actually in these, over this past month. So we can continue to conduct these inspections internally with the Metro Public Health Collaborative staff. So excited to have that additional resource. So the Department and the Department of Public Works collaborated on developing an infographic that helps us communicate the new dumpster requirements as part of the solid waste regulations update. These, along with already established door hangers, you can also see here, are being used in the field for awareness and also used as enforcement tools to really, to clearly communicate the requirements. So we're doing public awareness, but then also education is also an enforcement tool we use. In collaboration, again, with the regional group, the department has launched the Rodent Management Education Campaign. Areas of focus of the campaign include facts and myths about rodents, proactive steps that safely minimize rodent activity, reactive measures to correct rodent issues, and safe solutions and resources. The regional collaborative will soon be releasing short videos and graphics encompassing these topics across the webpages, social media accounts, and the four partnering communities. New staff at DPW is really just getting up and running, and we think that this new role will allow for increased communication on complaints and improvements to the Brook Online system. And will also help us focus on frequent complaint areas or what we frequently call hotspots. We do map our complaints, and we look at, we look to perform routine preventative inspections in those areas and identify contributing factors such as public and private property that might be in violation, whether it be solid waste or lack of pest control. And again, this involves collaboration with Public Works, where they enforce the solid waste, and the Health Department is enforcing the pest control requirement. I would say the solutions to reduce rodent activity are not the challenge. The challenge is getting everyone to take action to help resolve the issue, and this means town operations, public and private property owners, business owners, and residents, really all doing their part. I can get into some details if we want to, but public health, we always talk about prevention, so what preventative measures can we take? You know, I can talk about, you can see in the bullet points here. And again, if we want to get into more detail, I can talk about preventative measures the public could take, because that's really part of the campaign that we will be launching again with those videos and infographics coming out soon. But overall, proper trash disposal, eliminating food and water, removing shelter and harbage, and hiring professional pest control, those are all very important. And if we want to get into the weeds on that, I'm happy to talk about it. But I think I'll open it up for questions, and hear what the board is thinking.
Mike?
There's one bit of weeds I want to get into, and that is the private property owners in some cases are using pesticides, and there's concern about pesticides affecting wildlife and potentially even pets. And do we, what's the, what, what control do we have over that, and is that is that something that we're able to pay attention to?
Yeah, very little control to regulate on the local level. There is some state legislation that has been moving forward to regulate it on the state level. We actually cannot regulate, tell people that they cannot use it on private property. We do have a policy locally on town property where we do not use ESKAR's second-generation anticoagulants. We implemented that internally in collaboration with Public Works in the Building Department. It was used very infrequently, so it was, it was sort of a simple, small shift to just say, you know, we're not going to use it entirely. But on private property is, it is a larger challenge. Part of their campaign, though, does talk about using integrated pest management. Just putting pesticide in bait boxes is not a effective system to reduce rodent activity. You have to sort of have that more global look, and we're using all those prevention strategies listed on the last slide there. Reducing food, reducing harbage, all that in conjunction with rodenticides. It is an important tool in the toolbox that have some sort of rodenticide, but really it is one piece of the bigger puzzle of using integrated pest management.
Okay, thank you.
Paul?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. It was quick. I appreciate it. So, you know, we're doing a great job getting the information out, educating people on how to properly store. We know food is, food is the number one driver of the rat population, is access to food. If they didn't have it, they wouldn't be able to expand as quickly as they have been. The other piece is enforcement. And I'd like to, I know there's, you know, we don't have a rat czar. Because, Boston, somebody has a rat czar. We don't have a rat czar, thank God, I think. But it does seem that responsibility is diffused within, within, between various departments, which concerns me. Can you talk a little bit about enforcement? Do you, are you tracking, how many citations have been written, both to commercial entities and private owners? Are we, are we doing that type of tracking?
Yeah, I think one improvement we made when we launched the Rodent Action Control Plan was to bring some of those systems in together. And, you know, like many things, it's plus and minuses. We really look to bring in complaints to start tracking that better and making sure complaints we're getting in an efficient way to the responsible department, because there are really three large departments involved. So we drove everything to Brook Online. What that did, though, was that it created a lot of flow to Brook Online, and that's been a struggle for us, honestly, to keep up with it. So I think with the new staff at DPW, we're hoping to have that run smoother and better communications through that system. But, so that was one way that we were able to create efficiencies and make sure that each department gets the information they need to do their enforcement. The tracking, we all do use the ASELA program in our actual enforcement, so there is some ability to get data, but I would agree that the systems that DPW might use on solid waste enforcement are different systems and different, really, regulations and tools that they use than we might use in the Health Department with pest control enforcement. We might, depending on the situation, whether it's a restaurant, whether it's a residential, you know, building or a private property, single-family home, we might use different tools of enforcement because of the different codes that we enforce, whether it be the FDA food code with a restaurant. So it does create a mixed sort of landscape of different enforcement tools that we're using that is hard to encompass in one system. We have really struggled, and I think this is where we're trying to do better on communication, is to express what we are doing and the response we are doing. You know, I come here, I put it on the website, you know, I'm showing a lot of the work we're doing, but when somebody is affected by or sees rodent activity on their property or near their property, they want to know exactly what we're doing about that situation. And I think that's where we're really hoping that better communications through Brook Online will communicate the exact actions taken by the various departments. That, I think, is lacking in sort of the next step in the recommendations I'm hoping I can do.
I guess, Sigala, you know, I, I sometimes think of things too simply. I think of this one as it's too simply, I believe, but, you know, I'd really like to see one person. One person that, not a czar, not the rats are, but someone whose responsibility it is to go drive around. We know where trash is put out the night before. We know the restaurants, we can walk down the alleys. One person whose job, their, their job is to enforce the codes around food and waste disposal, and that's all they do. And they have full authority to educate, they can, first offense, they can decide to leave a hanger on the door or at the business, they can go and speak to them. Second offense, they issue a warning. Third offense, they issue a fine. But I think we need somebody who, that's all they do. Instead of waiting for a resident to complain and have to go through some workflow, work online, we could do a tremendous amount by just having a person responsible for enforcing the codes. I'd be happy to support funding that type of position.
Well, does that make sense?
I, I think what we've been trying to shift to are-
What other, what other problems would we appoint such as czar, or whatever you want to call them?
I did not say czar.
Well, whatever you want to call it, to handle.
I could say what we've been trying to do is work, doing team inspections at the same time. So we're going out there and having joint enforcement at the same time. It is still multiple departments involved in the, obviously in that inspection, but we are sort of on the parallel tracks issuing enforcement at the same time to have that holistic view, because like I talked about, it's not just about solid waste storage, it's not just about proper pest control. It's involving all those things, but I hear you. We're always looking for efficiencies.
David? You reference in your first slide, changes in pattern between pre-pandemic and post-pandemic. Beyond perhaps eating outside more often, what specifically are you seeing as changes in patterns?
Yeah, so first, it was the removal of the regular activity in our urban areas, right? We all went into lockdown. The food sources weren't there. So rats are a very successful species, they are very opportunistic, they went and looked for other food sources, which probably tended to be more in our residential areas where there was accumulation of trash and food sources, like Mr. Warren described, that's, they're going to look for food. So they went into areas that they probably weren't as active in before. And then when we all came back, and we came back with outdoor dining, not only outdoor dining, but a lot of outdoor eating in our parks, in our back patios, because we wanted to be safe, and we ate outdoors a lot, it created even more opportunities in multiple areas where there was harbage, where there's food and places for them to nest and burrow. So we sort of expanded their population, and then, and then went back, and they were able to succeed really in both areas. And I think there was a recent article in the Globe that Boston has hired Bobby Corrigan, who has, I've been to many trainings with him, he's wonderful. He blames all rodent activity on human behavior. We're the ones that contribute, you know, as a community, not any individual, to their, their success because of some of our behaviors, whether it be around food waste, I say simple things like if you see a full, a big belly or a trash receptacle, don't try to shove your waste in there, maybe go look for another one, so it can actually do what it's supposed to do and be rodent-proof, but the minute that container is now open and is no longer effective. So it's a lot of our behaviors that we need to change in order to reduce the population.
Mike?
So, one thing, speaking of, speaking of human behavior, if you walk along Monmouth Street, you get to St. Mary's, as you continue walking east, you enter Boston, along Medfield Street. Medfield Street runs up into Park Drive. And I've walked along there on trash day, Boston trash day, or whenever the, I'm, I'm not sure it's municipal trash or, or contractor, private contractor. But you, I've seen the black trash bags ripped open. And very clearly that's a rat that's, you know, it's not, nobody's coming along looking inside of a trash bag for, and so the, the question I have, is there any, any discussion back and forth with the city of Boston about their enforcement? I, I don't know whether they require closed containers or not, but on that street in particular, there was a great big long line of, of trash bags sitting out there.
Yeah, we're fortunate. One of our inspectors actually used to work in Boston. So has, still knows a lot of his colleagues over there. So if we do do one of these inspections where we go around, we do an evaluation of the neighborhood of the area and we look for contributing factors. And we do see things over on the city side. We do contact their inspectional services and ask for enforcement. I was happy to see in that same article that Brighton was identified in Boston as one of the areas that they're going to be targeting. Cause that will off, obviously help our effort if they do target their enforcement on the other side of the line in Brighton.
Right. This doesn't happen to be in Brighton. This is, the other side is Fenway. But, but do they require, do you know whether they require closed containers?
I, I'm pretty sure they do. They actually even stole our name of a rodent action plan. So I, I will look into that. I don't know off the top of my head, but I would be shocked if they didn't. Although New York just-
Yeah, New York just, you know, just woke up to like, oh, really? Yeah, like, really?
They invented the trash can, yes.
Well, but to be clear, my understanding is we don't require toters for multi-unit buildings and that there is routine disposal in bags as long as it's only left at the curb for a minimum number of hours. Is that correct?
I, I don't believe so. The solid waste regulations require everything to be in a rodent-proof tight fitted lid container.
We can, Kevin Johnson is on-
Oh, great. Or I meant to say that. I'm sorry. Kevin's also here to answer questions.
You gonna comment on that?
I haven't answered that.
Good evening. Kevin Johnson, Deputy Commissioner of Operations for DPW. Yeah, as far as the solid waste regulations about the storage of trash, they do have to be in a sealed container, toter, trash can. And even when they bring it to the curbside, it has to be sealed. So if there's any trash, which I, I, we, we do see some people just put the bags out and, you know, they say it's just there for an hour or 20 minutes. The truck, you know, their contractor's coming, but they are in violation if they do that. And I, if, if the board would allow me, I do have some rodent data that Mr. Warren was asking about. In FY23, we had 175 rodent issue complaints on our, our, our Brook Online and our work order system. Of that 175, when we went out to these issues, we did end up giving out 385 enforcements were taken from those 175 rodent complaints. 275 of those were warnings and the 110 or so ended up in $16,230 worth of fines. In FY24, so in the past six to seven months, we've, as Sagal has mentioned, we are, we've gotten better at tracking our, our complaints with Brook Online and GIS so that it's all going into one central location. And we're able to keep track of the total amount of complaints we're getting. We have 734 rodent issue complaints that we've tracked and on, on our systems. 351 enforcements were taken from those issues. That's like going out and they might see one or two other issues or they don't see an issue. 220 of those were warnings and we recouped $21,415 worth of fines from those complaints. And the Health Department, Health Department Rodent Page, there was 579 rodent activity noted in the, in the modern smart system, just to, as Sagal mentioned. So we are, we are doing a better job tracking them and we are doing a better job with educating and issuing enforcements to Mr. Warren's question. As far as the rodents czar, we don't have one, but we do recently, in May, we hired a, a new code enforcement manager that was approved by the town meeting about a year, year ago. So we finally got that staff member on board. It's been going well. She is focused in on all the hotspots that Sagal has mentioned. She's doing a lot of education outreach and she's doing a lot more follow-up on complaints where there was a, a warning issued and we're following up to make sure it was rectified. If not, they, we go to the fines portion of the enforcement. So it is getting better, but it, there's still a lot. We do get a lot of complaints, Brook Online. And one of our challenges and, and you know, maybe it's just letting everybody know is we'll get a complaint and all, all the complaint says is they saw a rodent crossing their street. So we'll go out, we will inspect that complaint. Majority of the time, we don't see any issues from that complaint because obviously the rodent's not there anymore. And we don't know where the rodent might have came from. He could have came, or she, he or she could have came from two or three, two or three neighborhoods and is on its way home or whatnot. So. But we are addressing those issues and we are going through the neighborhood and surrounding areas when we do get a complaint like that, just to make sure that there's no violation of solid waste storage or whatnot.
Paul?
Thanks, Kevin. And I appreciate all the statistics. It'd be great to get those, you know, published or maybe part of our Rat Track website that we have. So it does sound like we have someone who is doing kind of proactive education and code enforcement within your department. That, that's, that's good to know. I didn't realize that. That's, that's good to hear. You know, one of the things that, that I see frequently is, you know, the big belly trash containers are, are good. But periodically, you know, people will stuff a pizza box in there or they'll put, and this happens in St. Mary's all the time. They, there's folks across the street who use them for their household waste. I'll, I'll find a white trash bag in there, totally clogging the thing up. And of course it's not full. It's just the opening is clogged. And my understanding is that those specific units send an email when they're full. Do we, if it's, if it's clogged and they haven't broken the beam, it, it doesn't think it's full, but nobody can put trash in. That's when they put the pizza box next to it or they put the takeout containers next to it. I mean, I've seen everything. And so I'm curious, is there, do we have a routine schedule of reviewing those containers in the business districts, even if it doesn't send a message to say I'm full?
I can, can I, you want me to take that, Sagal?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. You're absolutely right, Mr. Warren, on everything that you just mentioned about the pizza boxes and people putting their household solid waste trash bags, trying to get it into the big belly. Just so you're clear, when we do get those complaints and we go out there and we notice that it is a, a large bag, it's not just litter. We, we do, our enforcement does go through the bags to see if we can get an address so that we can do some education and enforcement at, for that, that particular individual. As far as the pizza boxes, there is nothing right now. Big belly indicates that it's just a, that it's blocked with something and it's, it's still not full. So yeah, we do get emails when they are full, but we're not getting emails because of our storage, because of the, the hopper being jammed.
Right. So Kevin, my, this is my question. I, and I'm sorry, I may have not been clear. I understand they get clogged and therefore you're not getting the message that it's full, right? And it doesn't tell you that it's clogged. Do you have a regular schedule to visit all the, you know, these areas just to, to follow up? Are you always waiting for the message to go empty the container?
So the, the question, good question. The question, the answer to that is we, we have been, that was the traditional way. We try to, we try to go out and hit all the ones that we have the complaints for. We do, during the day, we do have people that are in these sections that are looking for this stuff, but it's not, it's not always guaranteed that we notice it. What our issue was, it, our, some of our issues is that a lot of these types of complaints or what you're seeing with the pizza boxes and stuff like that is happening on off-hours, later on in the evening, especially during the summer, in the high pedestrian traffic areas, some of the popular parks and whatnot. So as part of this rodent action plan, the town meeting a few years, about a year back, as well as when they approved the code enforcement manager's position, approved another labor staff and another sanitation truck, a smaller packer, we call it to go around and pick up big belly so that we could increase the service for picking up big bellies on off-hour. So we can create a, an alternate shift that we call, that we can get out there more towards later in the evening and more towards on the weekends. So that's when, and be able to touch all those hotspots where we feel you have heavier traffic.
Okay. So we, so we are, so I was going to mention the same thing that, you know, I, I don't know. I think I'm maybe the only one who lives in a business district in Brookline. So I live this every weekend. I live in St. Mary's where, you know, for Red Sox season, right? So we, we're a high traffic area. The, the bell, the, the big bellies often get clogged and there's trash all around them on the weekends. Are we, are we picking up trash on weekends?
Right now, we're picking up trash from three to, from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM on Saturdays and Sundays. Well, we're doing that seven days a week for big bellies and litter. But now that we, the additional labor FTE that we got and the initial truck, we're hoping to, we are going to be expanding that to be able to collect it later on in the evening when we feel that's when a lot of these big bellies are getting full or clogged. Cause that's, you get a lot more pedestrian and traffic in the parks and obviously Fenway at night and stuff like that.
Okay. Thanks, Kevin. That was very helpful. Thank you.
Hey, any other questions?
I just want to say to thank you both and thanks to Aaron, who's not here, but who's been, you know, the work you're doing. It's a lot of progress.
A lot of progress.
It's a huge undertaking. I know how much time you spend on it, your staff spend on it. It's a huge thing. So thank you. And to Kevin's point, I think this was the thing that, Kevin, thank you. I was sitting here being like, didn't we, didn't we improve that code enforcement? And, but this is, it's, it's because of the override, right? This is, this is where the override has been so vital to our efforts and it is a phased in process. So this is now year two of the override. We're coming into year three. We have these new resources that are gradually coming online and they are making an impact. Like this code enforcement position, like they have the authority to go to court on our behalf if they need to. Like it's a, it's a big benefit to us that we didn't previously have. So thanks to the members of the community who voted that through.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sagal.
Thanks, Kevin.
And thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Next, goals and objectives. Discussion of the select board's goals and objectives. So what is this about?
This is just an update, um, the board.
I know. Okay. What is this about?
A rhetorical question.
The first item in the packet is the draft of goals and objectives that we worked on at the June workshop. Remember that?
Oh, yeah.
The second item is the revision by town staff based on our discussions at the workshop. The select board as the chief executive body of the town has an important role in the financial management of the town, which includes making sure that its views in the form of goals and objectives are considered in the budget process. And we, we don't write up the budget, but you know, our views are important in the process of creating the budget. Budget starts with the financial plan, which is a consolidation of the requests of town departments that is put together by the town administrator, following the financial forecast and preliminary capital improvement plan in December. It's reviewed by the select board and the advisory committee. And the advisory committee makes its recommendation to town meeting, who must review, adjust and pass, and pass the budget at the end, hopefully before the end of the fiscal year. We have had situations where we were very, very close. Like I think in one case, 11 o'clock on June 30th, we were trying to get that budget passed. The purpose of our goals and objectives is to make the select board's views known to town departments as they begin their budget work in September and to the advisory committee when they begin working on their budget in the spring. When the select board begins to review the financial plan after February 15, it, it can have a conversation with town departments that includes the extent to which some of the select board priorities are included in the budget request submitted to the town administrator and a discussion of the reason why others were not. Maybe because they just weren't practical or they clashed with other priorities of the town. So with that introduction, I think we should have a discussion of the goals and objectives as revised by the town staff. Do you want to add anything, Chaz?
Just briefly. So the revision is based on your conversations and subsequent conversations I've had with you individually, just in, you know, where your thoughts are. The whole, the goal was to try and limit this to 20 across four key fields, broader fields. And where possible, not necessarily state the obvious, you know, for example, or, or, you know, develop something that then, you know, gives clear direction to staff. For example, you know, continue prioritizing investment in roads and sidewalks with regular updates to the select board on progress, you know, as opposed to, you know, just prioritizing that investment that obviously is a directive you've given us and we are doing, but making sure that you are then updated on how your investments are doing and what it is that, what it is that we're doing with that money. So that's, that's just where we are in this. But again, the goal is to have this finalized at your next workshop in, in September. So any feedback you have here, any feedback you would like to give us in private, we welcome that and we're happy to take this back and continue working on it as September approaches.
Okay. I, I think, you know, any comments we have, please, you know, state them. But, you know, we just got this, this afternoon.
Yeah, I apologize.
So urge, I urge the select board members to give their comments in writing or call Chaz up between now and our next meeting, when we should probably have a, you know, further discussion to find, not finalize, but semi-finalize of these goals and objectives. Who had their hand up?
I, I put my hand up. So first I want to thank you for distributing it. I, I did read it. I did call you, Chaz. I did have, create a bunch of edits. The first thing I noticed Bernard, and my first thought was to you because you created the initial version of this.
Right.
And I would encourage you to go compare if you, maybe you've already done that, but I did.
But I haven't done any.
There were some, there were some things that I said, I'm surprised that's not on that, that edit list. So I would encourage you to do that. I did have, I have a bunch of edits and I'll, and I'll send them to you, Chaz. But a couple of things that I just wanted to, to point out, a kind of high level. The first is, you know, I, I appreciate that the comprehensive plan is on, on the preserving, you know, on the planning piece. And I just wanted to mention that, you know, we need to be careful with having an outcome in mind when we talk about the comprehensive plan. And there was an outcome in mind as a kind of a second sentence in there about, you know, areas of the town that might be developed further. I, I think we just, we want to be careful with that and I, and I'll provide you with an edit. I, I also want to think carefully about language that we use with respect to operating overrides or any override. Item three, I think it's item three. I may have deleted one, but it's the support the activities of the Revenue Working Group. I want to, I encourage us to think a little more broadly that it's not just revenue, right? It's also costs. So I, I adjusted the language to say revenue and spending alignment working group. You know, we, we can't just be looking at asking the, asking the taxpayers to just raise more revenue. We should show that we've gone through the process of making sure that we're using every dollar as efficiently and smartly as we can. With respect to preserving our financial health, you know, we've been talking for quite some time about establishing quarterly budget summits with, with multiple parties. You know, that's a recommendation that came from BFAC that, you know, I, I think is one that we should actually take. Because we've, you know, we have struggled with all the various pieces of, of our governments, towns, schools, you know, advisory, capital, you know, thinking holistically about our budget. So I'd, I'd actually like to suggest that we add that as one of our objectives. So those are just, those are some of the, some of the changes. I think I, I added one other item. I changed the title where it said repairing our roads. I changed it to improve the public way for all users. Our chair of the transportation board might appreciate that. So it's, it's not just about roadways, roadways, right? It's also sidewalks and signaling. And, you know, particularly we have been talking about upgrading and repairing our audible signals for, for those in our community that are blind or visually impaired. And I'd really like to see us get very specific about making sure that all of our crossing signals are ADA compliant. And I know that's a goal that we have. It'd be good to be articulated. Those are some of the, that's just the initial feedback that I have.
Done.
I, I have not gone through this as thoroughly as Paul has, and I commend him for his comments. But I do want to note a couple of things because, you know, I commented on this generally before, and I'm going to just stick with the kind of comments I tend to make on these things. I like, I like things to be as simple as possible and clear as possible. And as plain in the language as possible. I think we've made significant steps. I'm going to take the liberty of noting that the original draft was over 700 words and this revised draft is just over 500 words. Any, anytime you can, you know, say, say the same message in fewer words, I think that's an improvement. The original draft did not have, but this draft does have subheads, which I think are, you know, are very helpful in kind of organizing what this is all about. So, you know, what, what are the major objectives that we have to keep in mind as we plan a budget? And you'll see them very clearly in this revised draft. I'm just going to go through them really, really quickly. There's just five of them. Excuse me. Preserve our financial health. Sounds like something we should be doing in every single budget. Plan for the future. Yes. Ensure better, greener, income diverse housing. Yes. Repairing our roads, something we've had a lot of conversations about on this board. I think the, the, the big challenge going forward is going to be, okay, you know, we said we want to develop a budget document that preserves our financial health. We, we should be able to say, once that budget document is developed, what parts of this budget document represent our steps towards preserving our financial health? Not just the same old steps that we always take every year, but maybe an initiative, new initiative or two. Same thing for planning for the future. Same thing for ensuring better, greener, income diverse housing. Same thing for repairing our roads. So those are the only comments I'm going to make for now, but I, I do think we're making a lot of progress in, in good directions here.
Mike?
I, I think the workshops that we've had, the offsites that we've had, I think have been very useful. And I think it's important to remember is not just about financial health, although obviously that, and you're absolutely right. That's really important. It's also about making sure that we factor into the construction of the budget, the changes that are inevitable in what the public is looking for. And it's, it's a theme that I've spoken on before. I'm sure I'll speak on it again. That if you look back 10 years and or 15 years, people's concerns were not as focused on some of the things that they, they are now focused on, certainly climate changes. One of those, asking the town for certain social services that municipalities have not traditionally provided is another. So let's make sure that when we think about putting objectives together, that one of those objectives relates to listening to what the public wants and incorporating that to the extent that's feasible, recognizing that we don't, we don't have complete flexibility with a budget by a long shot. Incorporating that into, into what we're doing.
David? I want to really commend both you and Chaz because I think this is really excellent. And at a minimum, it's an excellent step in the right direction toward identifying what we had discussed at the workshop as what we would like to see as goals and endeavors that we take up as a board and as a town. I see too, right here that I had mentioned is particularly important to me. Support the new public land acquisition and disposition committees efforts to identify opportunities for both new property or the disposition of existing property. So I think it's great to see that in there. And also reviewing pilot agreements and other agreements with local nonprofits with a focus on access to facilities and other amenities. I'm happy to see that there as well. But really all of this, I think encompasses quite nicely what we discussed at the workshop. I also like Paul's edits. I think those are very thoughtful and will help improve the draft for the next iteration that we review.
My, my only comments are that always remember what we're using this for, and that is to give recommendations to town departments about how they develop their budget. And yes, it's just a question of making sure that it's clear in our, in our language that we're doing that. For example, the first item under preserving our health. You know, instead of ensure healthy reserves protect us from financial instability, which is sort of a vague, you know, great goal, you know, that, that should be, I think, you know, focusing on the use of free cash to ensure that we are maintaining our reserves. In other words, really give clear direction as to, you know, what we're talking about in terms of budgeting for these things. And, and for example, there's certain things that I don't think really belong here, like maximize use of CPA funding. I mean, that's not really our, our responsibility. That's the CPA committee. And we can figure out ways in which, you know, we can recommend to town departments, working with the CPA committee. But, and maybe there's nothing wrong with including something like this, but just remember, you know, we, we need to make sure that we're giving town departments clear guidance as to how we want them to think about their budget making. And for another example, in terms of planning the future, item three, this is very important, you know, development holistic hub-based social services model. But maybe we need to say, you know, begin to budget over, you know, one, two, three fiscal years, the development of that model. And, you know, provide ongoing reporting to the select board as to how we're, how we're moving in that direction. So I mean, you know, my, my main concern, I, I haven't read this deep enough, or deeply enough to, to say much more than those general, make those general comments. But, you know, we think about how we're, what we're using this for. We want to in September, give town departments our views as to how they should develop their budgeting. And, you know, maybe they, they, you know, maybe what we're, we're thinking is not appropriate. But, you know, they need to have clear guidance as to, you know, what it is we're trying to do.
All this feedback is very helpful and I'm very grateful for it. We will take this back. I would, you know, just to note something that Paul said, because I think it is important to flag. There are references in here to two groups that don't exist, which is a public land acquisition and disposition committee. And what I shorthanded is the revenue working group, which obviously I think is, it's a good edit to make sure that it's not just about revenue. It is really about overall cash flow and, you know, what we're spending and what we're taking in. Those don't exist. You discussed both of those at the, at the workshop, and I think it's probably something worthwhile at the next workshop to really talk about putting a charge together for those groups. Like both the, for the disposition and, and purchasing of land and for looking at our financial future as we come out of the last year of the override to say, you know, where are we and what can we do to ensure that our expenses are, do not exceed our revenues? What, what steps can we take to lower the expenses and what steps can we take to raise revenues? And to have a comprehensive plan in place for that rather than a more ad hoc plan.
Chaz, when, when do we need to have that done by?
Now. Sooner.
I'm not saying to charge, but when, when do we need to have the recommendation?
Really, the recommendation needs to be made by next December at the latest.
Okay. So a year and a half.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, let's move on. Finally, Brian, you're, you're next. Okay. So first of all, Brian Kane is going to give the report of the transportation board, which is included in our packet and is very helpful. And then we're going to have a discussion on a couple of things related to that.
Evening.
All right. Good evening.
I shall do my best to channel both Shostakovich and Ted Nugent, I promise.
It's Segovia, not.
Segovia, excuse me.
Yeah, yeah.
Shostakovich.
Shostakovich.
Dmitri.
Tends to be, thank you. Tends to be a little bit more forte than, than Segovia.
Okay. I guess I'm more Ted Nugent than anything else. Thanks for, for having me. I, I appreciate it. And thanks for, for the invitation. I thought I had some slides, but oh, there we go. Thank you. Oliver. But we have introduction. My name is Brian Kane. I live at Ford Lincoln Road, right around the corner. I have the great honor to chair the transportation board since 2021. Little bit about me. I've worked in transportation in Massachusetts for about 20 years now, eight years at the T. And most of that time at the MBTA advisory board. I'm currently the executive director for the past four years. I serve in the Boston region MPO, which allocates millions of federal funding to local communities every year. And in February, Governor Healy appointed me as one of the 31 members of the Massachusetts Transportation Financing Task Force to make recommendations in December, how to fund transportation and infrastructure across the Commonwealth. So we actually met earlier today for two hours and discussed the needs of local cities and towns and municipal funding such as chapter 90. So very topical to what you're, you're talking about with your last item. This is the transportation board's annual report. I think it's a great idea that you're doing this. I'm very honored to work with my fellow board members, Jonathan Kapust, Chanelle, Guadino, Len Woley, Wendy Freeman and Nancy Moore. We're a great team. We all bring different skills. Jonathan is a skilled traffic engineer with lots of years of experience. Chanelle and Wendy are true neighborhood activists who bring important perspectives, such as people who walk, ride and drive to places like businesses, parks, schools and similar places. Len Woley is a town meeting member, passionate about improving safety for all road users, especially our children getting to school. Len is a math teacher and an aeronautical engineer. That's another way of saying he's scary smart. Nancy Moore, as you all know, is a law professor and brings the perspective of protecting our small business owners and merchants to the board. And also serves as our liaison to the disability commission, which is a crucial connection. And I'm very honored to serve with these volunteers as we collectively work to make Brookline safer and better for everybody. In terms of the basic numbers, since July of 21, we've met 21 times and taken up 351 individual agenda items. We meet almost monthly. We, there's been a few months where we haven't met. And I cannot stress enough how much our work is collaborative. We appoint and oversee three advisory committees, each of whom also meets just about monthly, as well as a very close relationship with other boards and commissions, including the Commission on Disability, Safe Roots to School Task Force, the Council on Aging and many others. We rely on an amazing staff here at the town, including but not limited to Commissioner Schute, Director of Engineering and Transportation, Daniel Murphy, who is still relatively new, Sustainable Transportation Engineer Dan Martin, Transportation Engineer Sam Downs and Transportation Administrator Amy Ingles. And Jonathan Anderson. These dedicated professionals work diligently daily to improve our town. And I am very grateful that they help us do what we do because as volunteers, as you know, we couldn't do it without, without the, the folks working behind the scenes and the town staff, and they, they do an amazing job. So responsibilities, as, as you know, the transportation board is authorized under MGL to administer all matters relating to parking and transportation on the public ways of our town. In terms of approach, the cornerstones of the board's transportation policy approach are to support and continue the overnight parking ban, to continue and support the two-hour default parking rule and slowing down cars, slowing down vehicles, not just cars, slowing down all vehicles, whether they be propelled by electricity or gasoline or diesel. And I say that, I mean trucks, bikes, scooters and all other forms of propulsion. Slow is better. And much of what we do is designed to slow things down to improve safety for everyone, including other people who are using the road, drivers included. Responsibilities of the board include a range, include the design, implementation and signage related to the movement and exclusion of all vehicles and pedestrians. We have no enforcement powers, unfortunately, or fortunately, I don't think we want them. We're not trained to do that. And we rely on the voluntary compliance of the public and the support of our dedicated police department for enforcement. And I want to recognize the sergeant who's here tonight. Thank you. Did that change? Sorry. What's on my screen here is not different from what's on that screen. So I'm doing my best.
You on this one?
No, I'm good. Thanks. So within, within this purview, as the select board knows, we regulate certain ride for hire businesses, the blue bikes in town, our parking meters, including the multi-space meters, signage placement and the recommendation of meters, recommendation of rates to you folks and neighborhood traffic coming requests and street design. I mentioned sort of our cornerstones, but I also want to note that we rely heavily on resolutions and actions passed by town meeting in, in recent years. And I'm just going to list a few of them just to, to sort of hope, so you understand how grounded we are in this stuff. In May 2017, town meeting overwhelmingly voted to lower the statutory speed limit to 25 townwide. November of 2019, a resolution calling for the town to properly maintain street markings. Article 16 from the same town meeting related to e-scooters and micro mobility devices. Article 31 from the same town meeting. Climate change article, which urged the town to push for less single occupancy vehicle trips. Article 31 of the May 2021 town meeting, another overwhelming vote to lower statutory speed limits to 20 miles per hour townwide. 2020, May of 2022, Article 19, Division Zero Committee, May, and May of 2022, Article 20, supporting pedestrian friendly lighting. So we try and balance all of these various resolutions that, that our legislative body has passed. And we also rely very heavily on policy papers from the select board. We rely heavily on the complete streets policy approved by this board in 2016 and updated in 2017 and also in 2023. There's also a transportation and mobility improvement plan from 2021 and a vision zero action plan is underway. So trying to balance all of those needs for all of the various stakeholders and all of the various users, as you can imagine, is, is a challenge, but we are very grateful to both town meeting and to the select board for its, its direction. And, and please know that we are trying to implement all these directions as best we can and as fairly as possible. DPW support, as I mentioned, it's critical. There are things outside of our purview that the DPW commissioner has control of, that it's important to note. Things on this slide are things that we do, but for instance, the DPW commissioner has the authority to do what's called daylighting, which is within 20 feet of any crosswalk. There's not supposed to be any cars parked, for instance. That's in the traffic rules and regulations. And that's not within the Transportation Board's purview. That's within the DPW Commissioner's purview. And that could be done at any time. However, given the parking crunch that we all hear about all the time, we this isn't always done. And the Commissioner, I believe, and I don't want to speak for her, tries to balance the needs of our commercial areas and the safety issues around daylighting as much as possible. Little bit about what we've done in the last year. It's it's been a busy year. And 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 there's been a lot of things that we've that we've undertaken. You can see lots of stuff there. Some of these have been more popular than others. Some of these have taken a lot longer than others. Some of these have lots of fans and some of these don't. We're coordinating with the T now on Beacon Street, trying to get the bridle path and the scene line improvements and construction out there coordinated. The Davis Path Footbridge continues to move forward, as you know, even though the grant applications weren't always successful. Trying to get mass dot regulations understood and implemented in our grant applications, especially for things like Washington Street, is a challenge. The Department of Transportation has gotten much more stringent on its own complete streets and Vision Zero requirements for money. And 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 it's a challenge. So I just wanted to end by talking a little bit about complete streets and how we plan to sort of modify this a little bit and 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 work with you to do this. So I think we need to amend the complete streets policy and really only apply it and not apply it everywhere, not apply it everywhere all at once. A one-size-fits-all approach doesn't work. And we learned this recently on on Arlington Street and Craftsland Road. Applying it only to arterials and collectors makes sense and not applying it to every local street where sometimes it just isn't needed. First of all, this saves us money. It allows us to focus our resources, which are stretched to to those major streets that need it the most, and also bandwidth. We can free up the bandwidth of of our amazing staff to do more. As of this month, there are still 52 outstanding traffic study and traffic coming requests before the department. And while we're grateful, incredibly grateful for the recent increases in 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 funding from overrides and other sources, there's much more to do. And we hear all the time from neighborhoods who want more traffic coming, who wants things slowed down in their neighborhoods. And we really wish we had the the resources to do it. Hopefully, by amending our complete streets policy, we can focus more money where it'll have the biggest effect and and not necessarily do it everywhere. Do you want to talk about scooters and stuff now, Mr. Chair? Do you want to wait?
Why don't we wait a second and then sort of introduce or do my introduction? I want to thank you for what what I thought was a very helpful report. And, you know, the purpose of us asking boards and commissions and committees to come before the board and, you know, talk to us about what they do is to learn, you know, what you're doing. We don't, we have so, we have tons of committees and boards and commissions, and we have no idea what they do other than what's on the webpage. And that's always not, that's not always very accurate or very useful. And, you know, the other thing that that I think we're trying to do is to you have the opportunity for us to listen to you and then let us know what our concerns are. For example, we appreciate the fact that, you know, we have raised issues about about complete streets and how it many times impedes the improvements to particular roads and ways that are necessary for purposes of safety and and other things. So, you know, that's an example of of how, you know, this two-way communication can be very helpful. So I mean, the the purpose of this meeting is I'd like to have your thoughts and the thoughts of Sergeant Lacy, who's in who's in the audience, on a number of safety concerns that have been conveyed to us or expressed to us by especially elderly and disabled residents related to bikes and scooters, but also all these other strange mobility vehicles like I'm not even sure what they're called, but sort of like unicycle wheels. What do you?
Micromobile.
White, whatever they're called, right? Yeah, you know, which, you know, scare a lot of people. And also, maybe it's Sergeant Lacy who can talk about the delivery bikes that, you know, I I live in the Brook House and I see them coming down Washington Street or Route 9, going into Boston, ignoring the lights and ignoring, you know, pedestrians on the road. I mean, it's really it's a wonder that you don't have serious accidents. But, you know, that that's another you know, area where I think it'd be useful to have your 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 thoughts and inputs. And, you know, the ideas and how we can reduce, you know, the danger or even the perception of the danger that that many people have in those in those areas. So.
So just to to briefly respond, I think this is a great idea, having boards and commissions come and report to you. It it's something we probably should have been doing for for years. And thank you for doing it. It's great. And I would love to figure out a way to actually amend these policies, the the actual things we have in writing. And and it would, it actually really helps to be able to point to something and say, no, we're doing this because the elected people in this town told us to do it. So whatever whatever you folks can do to help amend those documents would be incredibly helpful to us, especially the complete streets one that that we talked about. In terms of micro mobility, so, you know, there was four areas that that you specifically asked me to comment on, Mr. Chairman. Sidewalk and crosswalk safety, especially for older persons, and those with disabilities, encouraging all roadway users to comply with safety and speed regulations, addressing business delivery challenges and educational and or enforcement measures. And I'll just take them one at a time, and I'll be I'll be very brief. The, you know, we take sidewalk and crosswalk safety incredibly seriously. As I noted above, we we strive to slow everyone down in our streets, including cars, trucks, bikes, scooters, and other modes of travel, those electrically powered unicycle skateboard things, the, yeah. Slowing down all vehicles makes it safer for everyone, especially those on sidewalks and in crosswalks. And and I believe that if we are going to have speed limits and the speed limits are going to mean anything, we should be using design and infrastructure to compel people to slow down. I know there's issues with with getting emergency vehicles places. I I understand that. Somerville is is putting raised elements in lots of different places. I I talk all the time to the Somerville Director of Traffic. They are not seeing huge slowdowns in their emergency vehicles. They're not seeing huge slowdowns in their in in their traffic. They're not seeing huge congestion in their squares. And it seems like the citizenry of Somerville is incredibly happy with this. And it's something that I think we need to consider. I think we need to really take a hard look at putting raised elements places to force cars to slow down. And again, not just cars. I say cars because it's what comes to mind first. Force cyclists to slow down, force everyone to slow down. We've all got in a in a hurry since the pandemic and it's 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 led to some some issues. And and I think we need to just go back to safety first. The second part was encouraging all roadway users to comply with safety and speed regulations. As I mentioned, you know, we we haven't, the Transportation Board can influence signage, signals, infrastructure, and policy, but we don't have enforcement power, nor should we. So we will continue to use paint signs and signals to 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 encourage voluntary compliance. But at the end of the day, it it's going to take enforcement to to get the the scofflaws, the folks that just will not obey the rules, to be compelled to to obey the rules. And that gets us to the business delivery challenges. I mean, this is a challenge that many communities across the country are facing right now and frankly, across the world. We've all seen delivery drivers and others wantonly float the rules, cutting in and out of traffic, cutting people off, driving up on sidewalks, driving over curbs. It's 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 a problem. You know, I know in Boston, just this past weekend, the police were confiscating unregistered delivery vehicles or ones that were operating illegally and and seem to be operating illegally. Now, this is an extreme response, and and I'm not suggesting we do that, but it's just, it's an example of what is being done in places. And just just earlier today, I emailed I emailed you, Ms. Oliver, a a a thing I recently saw, which was a scooter painted on the sidewalk on the on the sidewalk with the red X through it to designate that scooters should not be on walking paths. And you'd think it would be common sense that you should not be putting electrically propelled things on walking paths, but sometimes people need to be reminded of that. So again, it's something we should probably consider doing. But again, we we need enforcement there. And and if folks are going to willingly break the law, there's not a heck of a lot that we, as a Transportation Board, can do. But the 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 question of education and enforcement is really one that that I've been thinking about for a long time. This is my second go around on the Transportation Board. And as Mike Salmon might remember, we we once discussed trying to work with a school committee in the school department to put in some kind of education program for for young for our young people to learn about riding, safe ways to cross the street, safe ways to to be on the public way. It could be done through physical education. Kids could ride those little push bikes and learn how to stop at red lights and stop signs and cross safely and use crosswalks. I don't know if we can fit that in the curriculum. I I have no idea how that stuff works, but I I can tell you that education is desperately needed, and I I think it's something that we should we should do. And I'm and I'm happy to to take this up with the with the school department. I think it's something that is a novel approach. I know it's done in other countries. But I guess it just, you know, to to in in conclusion, I guess, or to conclude this part, we really do see our role as safety first. And we are trying to slow down everybody. And that is not always popular, as you know, as you guys get the phone, you folks get the phone calls. I think slowing down everyone does make it safer for everyone, including people in cars, including people on sidewalks, including people on bikes, including the elderly people in crosswalks, including folks who just want to just want to do their shopping. We all just have to slow down. And it might take an extra few minutes to get somewhere where you're trying to go. But at the end of the day, it's just going to be safer for everybody.
The of course, you have no enforcement power, which is why we ask the police department to also appear, but actually, your recommendation. Let me give you credit for that. And and, you know, give their sort of thoughts on enforcement issues. I remember a number of years ago, there were officers on bikes on Longwood Avenue stopping bikers who went through red lights and and, you know, did other things that were unsafe in route to Longwood Medical Center. They're not there. They they haven't been there for for a number of years. And, you know, I'm sure there are reasons why. I'm sure there are reasons why that type of enforcement is either impractical or, you know, not useful. But we'd like to just know understand some of those issues and maybe come up with some ideas as to how we can address that aspect of this problem.
I couldn't agree more. We 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 have Deputy Superintendent Murphy at all of our meetings. We also have Deputy Chief Cantor from the Fire Department at all of our meetings. We continually try to ensure that we are communicating and and coordinating with them, but I know there's been staffing issues at the police departments and 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 other areas. So I'm not a law enforcement official. Nobody wants to give me a gun. It's a good thing. I wouldn't know what to do with it. But I I just think that the police do a great job with the resources they have and and we rely on them. And, you know, I'd be interested to hear from them as well, if you don't mind.
Sergeant Lacy. And we're not asking you to do anything, make, do any miracles, but, you know, just help us understand what the limitations are and what what things we can do.
Certainly.
To move this forward.
To your point about the cycles.
Microphone.
Sorry. First of all, hello, everybody. Keith Lacy, Saj in Traffic Division, Brookline Police. The bicycle thing, I agree, has kind of got fallen away in terms of the bike-on-bike kind of enforcement. But we recently just applied for a grant in 2025 with the Office of Public Safety. In the years past, we've had the standard kind of components. It's distracted driving, click it and ticket, speeding. But there's another realm that we applied for, this strictly pedestrian and bicycle enforcement. So that's a track that we're really seeking this time coming up. And we're going to hopefully get the funds. And then we've recently sat at the table with the pedestrian Advisory Board, and it's been, we've had, I've been part of two meetings there, has been very informative, very engaging, and we've heard a lot of those complaints. So my hope is that some of that, if we get that, some of that funding and attention, it's in addition to our regular shifts. It's overtime pay for folks. And thanks to you guys, you've increased our ranks. So more people are taking this. They're not being forced to do additional shifts because of the dearth of bodies to cover shifts. So now there's availability for people to take these extra shifts and and utilize it. And so they'll go for a four-hour block, seek an area in town, and enforce it. Crosswalk enforcement, for instance, we can set up decoy stuff. There's also a component of non-enforcement revenue that's available to us. And I think to potentially sit down with the T, the T Board and the the pedestrian Advisory Board and try and understand what can we do more for them in terms of, you know, enforcement. But we are out there. I've got some, just some small data. We've, up to this point this year, we've written 3,001 citations. That's actual citations issued to operators who have violated some sort of law. I don't have the breakdown on what those are at this time, but that that's a considerable amount of, and there are other stops where a citation is not issued. It's called a verbal warning. So it's probably more, quite more than 3,000 stops.
So these are both bikes as well as automobiles?
More motor vehicles.
Right.
Certain there are a few bicycles in there, but the overwhelming number would definitely be motor vehicle stops. And and some scooter stops, yes, a lot of the bikes. But I don't have that breakdown. I was kind of thought the focus was on some seniors and the vulnerability of them, you know, crossing and stuff. And I have some 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 data on that. And what I found in the last 18 months, I went back and there's been 10 collisions of pedestrians over 60 years old in town. Thankfully, none of them were fatal. Five of them were in crosswalks, where were folks in crosswalks at low speed, thankfully. So they're and citations were issued in in five of those crashes. The average age of the the people involved was 72.6 years old. So they all are just, two of them were backing, were just someone was backing up and didn't realize someone was behind them, which is more on the accidental side than somebody getting struck in a crosswalk. That's strict liability there on the operator for that, you know, and so that's happening. So there there have been, we've done a five-year look back, pedestrian, I have the data here. If you, there's a little bit of a report, if you want to put that on the record. But it's up to, there's been 205 pedestrian versus motor vehicle collisions from 2018 up through June of of this year. So it's a pretty, pretty high number. It it averages about 31 a year. And in the grant application, you know, our goal is to to cut that in half at least, and, you know, love to see it at zero. But you know, with all due respect to Bob Dylan, the roads, they are a-changing, you know, and 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 folks need the education component of that, you know, where are we, you know, the three E's, as you know, it's 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 engineering enforcement. Excuse me, engineering, education, and enforcement. And those all go together. We have to collaborate on all of that. And, you know, folks in town, all of these new roadways, new speed limits, this is all new to them. So just being out there, making these stops, informing the public is a big part, and we're happy to to be part of it. And we are out there, and we're doing as much as we can. We, as Deputy Murphy, attends all these meetings, very intuitive and chief pastor, she's she's, you know, they're all, they want us to be out there. We cross, 350 hours a week are devoted with our folks to cross kids in school, which it comes up to over 18,000 hours a year, safely getting kids to and from school, parents, vulnerable population. So we're out there, the Traffic Division particularly. It it really touches a lot of folks that are vulnerable each each day. So that's what we're passionate about. We want to continue to do it. And if we can uptick it or enhance. it or enhance it, or if there's any kind of suggestions that you think we could be doing, I will get back to you on the scooter delivery part. I really don't have any kind of handle on that particular thing right, right as we speak. But it is a problem. I see that. And it's difficult to engage folks on scooters because they can get through the traffic so, and then disregarding the lights. Then it becomes a pursuit kind of, you know, thing with us and can be challenging at times.
We have some authority to regulate the companies that use these scooters. I mean, we had a hearing, or not a hearing, but it's a licensing meeting or hearing a few months ago. So, you know, so we have some authority to at least speak to the companies that, this is a food delivery service, who provide, who hire these operators and exert some control there.
Yeah, if we're able to attribute the operator to that particular entity, that would be great, you know, to utilize those means to try and correct some of those behaviors. But it would also be nice to, you know, stop them and, you know, try and engage them on the street in real time, too. But that's something that I'm going to have to get, well, we're going to have to get back to you on in terms of a plan for that. But we are actively out there as a department and specifically as a traffic division, you know, with our, with our civilian folks and then all of our people who go out pretty much exclusively all day, all day and look for violators and/or respond to crashes and accidents. And then with this grant, these grant funds, it's been really good. This year, we've spent the money, or pretty much almost spent all of the money, wherein years past, some of that money was left on the table because, again, like I spoke of earlier, that we just didn't have the opportunity to, to, to commit to that, to do it, you know. So, so that's good, that we are doing it. It's an enhancement to what we're doing 24/7 as a department. It's an additional thing. And I really look forward to working with the advisory committee about some ideas for what we can be doing.
You know, we're not looking for answers, you know, tonight, but just begin the process of coming to answers. And the data that you referred to earlier, if you could get that to our office, and, you know, we could distribute it to the select board as well as to the public. I think that'd be very helpful.
All right.
The, any other?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mike?
Yeah, actually, I have some, some things that I want to address that, to address some of the things that Brian asked. And also, they tie into what Sergeant Lacy is talking about. First of all, I want to say that I'm Brian's great grandfather when it comes to chairs of the transportation board. There were two people intervening between us. And you were on the board, in fact, when I was chair, I believe. Right. So, and I, I'm very pleased to hear the comments about complete streets. I think Paul and I have been very interested in that, as you know, and he's really taken the lead on it. And that's great, that you're, that we're headed in the right direction, I think. When it comes to slowing things down, I think it's really important to say what the purpose is. And the purpose is to reduce injuries. And you mentioned 205 vehicle and pedestrian collisions since 2018. We have a Vision Zero Committee that I'm the representative for. And the idea is to have zero deaths, but also reduce vehicle and pedestrian collisions very substantially. When two vehicles collide in Brookline at the speeds that people are typically going at in Brookline, there aren't any fatalities. It's rare to have an injury. When a pedestrian collides with a car or even with a bicycle, it's much more likely that somebody's really going to get hurt. And it's that that we need to be focused on. So that's the slowing things down, it's great to, you know, sort of take your time. But it's also really important from the perspective of reducing injuries. I had mentioned earlier that we want to respond to what people want, and I was talking about the budget. And I think it's fair to say to the transportation board that we know you're pulled in multiple directions, that there are people who want to go faster, people want to go slower, people want this to be done, people who want that to be done. And I think there are a lot of misconceptions in terms of what people perceive the danger to be. And I know that, I confess that I'm a bicyclist. I rode here on my bicycle tonight. So I know that there's a perception that bicyclists are going to run over people and kill them. It's much more likely that the cyclist is going to be hurt trying to avoid somebody who steps in front of them. But in any case, I think there's a perception of danger that is sometimes misplaced. And yet, my own perception of danger is that we ought to be taking some kind of measure to reduce the dangers from electric scooters, especially delivery. And I wonder whether requiring them to be registered is a possibility so that you can attribute the driver and the, and the scooter to a particular food service delivery, food delivery service.
I think they're already required to be state rated.
Well, only if they're, you have to have a certain number of CCs in the, for gas powered ones. And electric ones, I think there's a similar, it's a class three vehicle that needs to be registered to go 28 miles an hour. I think they're going faster than 28. But they're, but we're not, I don't see that being enforced effectively because they're not carrying any kind of indication that, that they're, that they're registered, except for the ones that have a plate. So I don't know if that's practical, whether that would help. And I don't want to suggest doing something silly if you don't think, and the department doesn't think it's sensible. But that's something that I think would be good to take up.
At least we can just get the facts. I mean, the ones I see seem to be actually mopeds as opposed to.
Yeah. Yeah. I think that's true. Mopeds with a case on the back. The last thing I wanted to say is there, one of the points that was made to me recently, in fact, this morning in a conversation with someone who, one of the people who wrote a letter to us, is that we should be seeking some diversity of interest on the advisory committees that report to the transportation board. And I know we have a bicycle advisory committee that's, that is fortunate in having some very thoughtful bicycling, cycling advocates. But it would also be helpful to have some people who are perhaps not as, as focused on, on cycling. And I appreciate that, you know, you want an advisory committee that has a particular set of views and interests and comes to the transportation board, and it's your job to sort of sort all of that out. But I do wonder about increasing the diversity of the advisory committees.
Well, first of all, as your great, great grandson, I look forward to being in the inheritance list. That's going to be great. Thank you, Michael. In terms of, I saw that comment today as well. And I agree. And part of the issue is getting folks to volunteer. And obviously, the folks that volunteer are folks that are passionate about these things. I mean, we, we just reconstituted our shared mobility advisory committee in June, because we have a ton of MBTA stuff that needs to get done. So yes, I completely agree. I think term limits is not a terrible idea for these things. I thank you for reappointing me for another three year term last month. Like, I can assure you, that will be my last. And I think we need some kind of turnover as well on the advisory groups. I completely agree with that.
Right. Okay. And there was, I think there's actually one other thing I should say specifically because you, because I know what you do in the daytime, is that while we're very interested in slowing things down on the roads, that's not true of the T. We appreciate your service.
I agree with, Mike and I speak quite a bit about transportation stuff. First, Brian, I want to thank you for your service. I, you're someone that I find to be very approachable, collaborative, and, you know, you should be replicated on many of our boards and commissions. And I thank you for our service. Now that I blew that smoke, about the issue that Mike just raised, that you spoke to about diversity, one of the things that, you know, to consider is, is the mechanism where who's deciding, who's bringing candidates forward. I think traditionally, the transportation board has relied heavily on the chairs of these subcommittees. And the chair of the subcommittees are the gate, they're the gatekeeper. And I think that that in itself can actually limit diversity of thought and opinion. So I'd encourage you to look at that. It's one way. I want to thank you for bringing up complete streets. Mike and I and yourself and Aaron, Commissioner Schut and others have sat around for hours discussing this. And I think we all have a common vision in mind. And I think we're going in the right direction. And you're right, we need to modify and make some adjustments to, to our policies. I have an ask, two asks actually. One, I don't know if we've already settled this yet, but we need to keep micro mobility devices off the sidewalks.
Agreed.
This isn't just about collision, it's about fear. And if you are, if you're someone like me that is often walking with young children down the business district sidewalks, or you're a senior, like me, believe it or not, we're all seniors, you know, it
And chairs.
It can be very intimidating to have someone coming up behind you on these devices. And these devices don't make actually any noise. And suddenly they whiz by you. We, we can't be asked or have a policy that says, these things can be on the sidewalk and they need to go a certain speed limit. It'll be completely unenforceable. So I don't, I don't know where that's going, but.
Well, we just amended the traffic rules and regulations on this very topic, I think in May, to try to make it much clearer that these things should not be on the sidewalk.
Right.
But, you know, not everyone reads the traffic rules and regulations.
No, I understand. That's where enforcement comes in. I think enforcement's real important. And then the last point is the Gateway East dedicated bus lane. I commend that we're doing a pilot and we're trying it. You know, and I guess I'm wondering, it's a question I have, how is feedback being taken into account? Who's taking into account? And are we making adjustments to the signaling and the approach that's taking place there to really adjust the pilot as we're going forward?
Yeah, we've already had the, the folks out adjusting the signal timing on the High Street side. It was not coordinated for the first week. It's pretty clear that it wasn't coordinated. So we are trying to fine tune it and get it to work the way it's designed to work. That pilot will be a challenge. And I, I hope it is successful. But as we've talked about here before, it's going to be a challenge. And, you know, my wife hadn't been home in three weeks and sort of was asking me the other day, what the hell is going on down there? What are you doing? And I had to say, well, it's a pilot and we're going to work through it. So, yeah.
Brian, I guess my, my point is, I'm just encouraging that the public needs to understand how, what type of feedback are you looking for? Where does it get channeled? How do they know when adjustments are being made so that they can have the confidence that this thing is just not going off the rails?
So the.
And, and that they should tell you or whoever what the specific issues they have in using that intersection.
So the staff are monitoring and the police department are monitoring backups in the village as well as on High Street, as well as on Route 9. So that's, that's three data points right there. And then the DPW was supposed to set up a dedicated email address, and I'm not sure if they did that.
I think they did. I think they did. I think they did. But are you, is the transportation board going to have a periodic?
Yes.
Public hearing check in on this thing so that you can hear?
Quarterly, quarterly.
Quarterly, okay.
Yes. Well, we're going to start in September because it's summer.
Sure.
But yeah, we're the first one in September, and we'll, we'll try to hear. And we rely on top meeting members as well. And as you know, they're not shy.
Can I, I just want to put in and suggest that you talk to Brookline News.
Oh, good idea.
About getting the word out as to what you're doing and why and what the feedback mechanism is.
Good idea.
Bernard, I did have one last thing that I promised someone I would ask. I had a, I had a resident. No, I had a resident contact me. And actually, there was a gentleman that spoke to the board maybe two months ago. And it had to do with parking meters in quarters.
Yes.
And, and I don't know where, if this is the transportation board or somebody else, but, you know, there are, there are, there are individuals in town that do not want to use a credit card. They're very fearful of using a credit card, or they don't have an electronic device and it's expensive. Bernard, I think, actually runs around with rolls of quarters.
I do.
He does. So are we, are we, here's my question.
I'm running into Starbucks to get a cup of coffee. All I need is 12 minutes.
You don't need to pay an extra 40 cents.
12 minutes plus 50 cents.
Right. So here's my question. Are we maintaining, and are we committed to maintaining our meters to include the acceptance of coinage?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Legal tender for all debts, public and private.
John?
I think Brian said two things that I'd like to emphasize, because he's basically given us the permission, if that's the word, to seriously consider pairing back how many streets we apply this complete streets policy to. That's huge.
I wouldn't say permission is the right word. I work for you, so.
Yeah. And I, I grant, it's not, it's not the right word. But let's, let's take that very seriously, that he brought that up tonight. Let's also take very seriously that he brought up, not just we need to slow down, but there's a way to achieve that. And he mentioned the Somerville example. And it isn't necessarily, I love that there's this distinction between speed bumps and speed humps. And then there's probably something a little bit below level of what?
Who knows?
Yeah. It doesn't have to mean creating a, excuse me, impediment to emergency vehicles. But there are measures that can be taken that will help to slow people down routinely and shouldn't require tons and tons of time and applications for grants and so on, and so on, and so on. Tappan Street is a perfect example. The people on Tappan Street who have been petitioning this board, are pleading to this board, that they have an ongoing dangerous situation there for children who routinely are on their way to school using Tappan Street sidewalks, but sometimes have to cross the street, that the traffic is too fast, it speeds by too quickly on Tappan Street. Are we going to do anything about it? Well, maybe if we can figure out something that is sort of a soft solution to it. And I hope we'll take you seriously on that as well as on pairing back on the complete streets.
Please do.
Bernard, just briefly to John's point, and I'm glad he brought up the complete streets pairing down. Mike and I have been working with, with Ryan, Commissioner Schut and others to come up with the revisions to the policy, which means pairing down to, you know, feeders and major corridors. And that's important. But, you know, the other thing, the reason why completes, we started down the path of looking at complete streets was because anytime we wanted to do anything to a roadway, it required going through the complete streets policy, which required a full study, including speed humps and traffic calming, you know, and, and we need to be able to modify the policy to allow our DPW to be able to maintain and fix our roadways to make them safe without having to go do a significant complete study of the public way. And I'm with you. I, I believe that slowing traffic down, I think Mike mentioned it, Brian, you mentioned it. We, you know, Boston is going through a very rapid conversion of its, of its roadways to include these traffic calming speed bumps. And they're doing it very quickly. And I think at very cost effectively as well. And I would fully support seeing us do that sooner rather than later as well.
Good. Yeah. One other thing that I've read in some of the comments from the community, the idea of road diets. Now, their concerns are a little different from my concern. My concern is that that's a misrepresentation of what you're really doing. It's not a diet in that the cars go away. It's more of a girdle. And, you know, we're pushing traffic into other areas and not slowing, and not reducing traffic down. And that's just a little issue of terminology. But I think it really is important in many situations that we look at the effect of so-called road diets on area or adjacent streets and areas.
So. No, absolutely. And then the, the road diets that we're looking at now are on Hammond Street, on Lee and Clyde, which. on, uh, Lee and Clyde, which are four-lane roads that are, that are really speedways, um, that we can, road diet means you, you kind of go from two lanes to one in some cases and, and try to restrict it. Narrow roads tend to slow down traffic more. Uh, DCR just did this on the Hammonton Parkway next door, by the way, so I encourage you to look at it. But yeah, we also don't want, um, don't want traffic then going up into neighborhoods. That's, that's not ideal either. So we're trying to balance everyone's needs and wants, and, um, sometimes we get it right, sometimes we don't. But when we don't, we can fix it pretty quickly, so.
So, um, I, I guess that, that, um, conclusion of this is, uh, Sergeant Lacy's gonna get us some data as well as information regarding, uh, delivery vehicles, uh, and, and other things. And, um, the idea of, of looking at how do we increase the diversity, uh, with respect to, you know, particularly, uh, elderly, uh, representatives, uh, on some of the committees that report to the Transportation Board is something that we should follow through with in terms of identifying people and in terms of encouraging people who are interested in this issue to come forward and, and, um, present themselves. I guess to, in this case, to you, since we don't appoint, uh, members of these committees. So, you know, I, I hope you follow through on that, cause that, that, that is something that's very important and.
Message has been received, yes. Um, and I, I just, I should also note that the, the task force that I serve on is also looking at the delivery issue and trying to figure out how to do some identification around that and some revenue capture perhaps. So it's, it's something that is being struggled with everywhere, um, around the world, not just, not just in the U.S.
And just one more thing, Bernard, on your, on your list of to-dos for Brian, um, you know, I spoke to Commissioner Shute before she went on vacation. They're actively working on amending, uh, and making policy recommendations to a whole set of things that are related to Complete Streets. That's gonna come to us and it's gonna need our support and approval. So I'm, I'm hoping that we're, that we're gonna be united in, in helping to, uh, to make this happen.
Yeah. And, and also Sergeant Lacy, if you could just make sure we get information on the grants that you're applying for with respect to enforcement, as well as, I think it'd be very helpful to us and the community to, to understand the, 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 the problems that you may be having with enforcement, whether it's, uh, staffing or, um, I don't know what, what the other problem would be, but, I mean, it's not as simple as just having, you know, bicycle officers out there, you know, stopping, uh, bicyclists who go through a red light. It's much more complicated than that.
Yeah, the grants get awarded in October, so I'm hoping I'll have a success story to report there. Um, yeah, and, um, I, I wouldn't say there's problems right now. I think we have enough. We have a lot more staff than we did maybe two years ago. So I think we're trending in the right direction in terms of enhanced enforcement and maybe, uh, specific types of enforcement too. We have the flexibility for that too, so that's moving in the right direction, so.
Yeah.
Um, we're on board with all.
Yeah, the select board made sure that, uh, the staffing issues were addressed.
And again, we appreciate that very much.
Yeah, have something to say, Jess?
Uh, I was just gonna say, the third rail of enforcement in Massachusetts is always cameras.
Okay. No kidding.
We should have that discussion.
Yes.
We really should. No, I'm serious.
Mm-hmm. Well, we've, we've actually had that discussion with our, our, um, most prominent state rep with Tommy Vitolo, and he says that, uh, I mean, it's a state law that we can't use cameras, uh, and, uh, that's not gonna change.
Mm-hmm.
It's come close to getting repealed a couple of times now.
The question is whether we wanna do that.
Right.
The, haha, the answer is yes.
Answer is hell no.
Yes.
Okay. No.
Are you frequently going through, going through red lights, Bernard? Or you don't want?
No.
Is that what's going on?
No. If I go through a yellow light though, I don't wanna get a ticket in, in the mail saying that I went through a yellow light three months ago. Anyway, okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very, very helpful. Okay, what's next on our agenda?
A whole slew of.
Little slew of things.
What agenda?
Boards and commissions, reappointments. So these are reappointments, uh, that we're gonna, uh, just make, you know, without, uh, interviews, of course. Uh, these are people who have been, uh, recommended by the chairs of the various committees, um, and no, a select board member has identified any of them as requiring, you know, special scrutiny, uh, or anything.
With one exception.
Oh, that's right. One, one exception.
Bernard, I do have one, can I make one comment before we, we vote?
Yep.
Um, in this, again, I, I agree with reappointing everybody. These are all quality folks and dedicated to, to, to serving. When we come to this again next year, um, I know that we advertise for openings on boards and commissions. Um, I wonder if it'd also be helpful for people to know that there's, that there are, you know, seats up for renewal, um, that, that, you know, if someone wanted to apply, they wouldn't be prevented from applying because there's no opening. Well, nobody owns the seat, um, of, of an appointment, and, you know, people should be encouraged, if they'd like to join a board or commission, they should put in an application, whether there's someone who's not renewing or not.
Yeah, good, good, good point. Uh, hear that, Tiffany? I'm sorry, David.
I, I completely agree with Paul. A lot of these committees that we're being asked to reappoint people to, and again, these are probably all fine candidates, but nevertheless, Advisory Council on Public Health, Economic Development, Parks and Recreation, Zero Admissions Advisory, Zoning Board, Planning Board, those are all boards that generate a lot of interest. And it's really hard for me to believe that nobody would express interest beyond these incumbents. And we talk about wanting to diversify our boards, our representation, and yet we essentially rubber stamp these selections. Again, that's not saying these aren't the right people, but I think that we would be better served if we engaged in more active outreach and advertising about the positions, what they would entail, so that we are constantly attracting new candidates from a diverse array of demographics to apply and then interview them, see how it goes.
Okay. John.
I'm gonna disagree. I'm gonna disagree. I'm sorry to have to disagree. And I feel like this is one of those classic cases where, having done it the way that Paul and David are suggesting, we came around to the realization that we are overwhelmed, um, with the whole process of routinely interviewing the current incumbent and everybody who has applied for the position, when in fact, we've already heard from the incumbent's chair that the chair actually is very happy with that incumbent. That incumbent is very valuable to the board, um, and we have no reason willy-nilly to go looking for someone to replace that incumbent. And just as it is important to get diversity on these boards and commissions, it's also important to get continuity. It's also important to get expertise. It's also important to reward people who volunteer and then faithfully serve. Um, and, you know, not just because a few other people wanted to apply for the position, bump them off the board. So I, I will disagree. We can have that discussion, you know, when this comes around again next year. But, uh, good luck to you if you decide to go in the other direction and have to interview every single person who applies for every single opening on every single board. That's dozens and dozens and dozens, and it ties us up and it ties up the staff. And it's for no purpose if we're gonna end up reappointing the incumbent anyway.
Yeah. I actually agree with you, John. The other issue is, you know, except for a couple of these committees, uh, we don't get a lot of interest, you know? So, yes.
If I can add, um, of all these committees listed, we have had recent vacancies or currently do have vacancies outside of the, um, incumbents, uh, except for Parks and Rec, Zero Admissions Advisory Board and Solid Waste Advisory Committee. So those are the only ones that I don't think have had vacancies recently.
And we just filled a couple of vacancies in Parks and Rec.
Then, I think then we would take that off of the three that I've just mentioned.
Yeah.
Um, and that, that also goes for Indigenous People Celebration Committee. We just filled a vacancy there as well.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, um, unless there's any further, okay, let's not get into that.
No, no, I, I respect Sean's point of view, and I, I don't entirely disagree with you. I would weigh very heavily incumbency and what the chair of a board thinks as well. I just don't think the inquiry should end there, that because someone's an incumbent, they're automatically in. And I think that there's an in-between that we could have. Maybe it's filling out a questionnaire, maybe it's a letter of interest and we just review that. Doesn't necessarily have to be a full interview and certainly would weigh very heavily someone's service and the recommendations they receive. So it's not an automatically kicking them out.
It's not that they're automatically in. And I have raised a question which is going to, you know, I hope we'll just specify that where there's a question, uh, you know, about whether an appointment, uh, is sort of at the threshold, um, we take some time. And that's all that I'm gonna request that we do tonight with one of these appointments, so it's not automatic.
Uh, and, and it's not on, it's not on the list. That appointment's not on the list.
Well, if it's not, it's not, but it's, I'm looking at it, so.
Oh, okay, well, maybe that is the wrong agenda. Mike?
I, I hope this will, well, I, I hope this is helpful, but I would say as a, uh, when I was chair of the Transportation Board, um, I in fact, uh, asked the select board not, not to reappoint someone. And the select board replied, uh, which I was very, very happy that they did. I think you can rely generally on the chairs to give you a, a, a good feedback on.
Exactly.
On whether somebody is, is, um, doing the job and a helpful member.
And, and by the way, one of the reasons for the, uh, requirement that boards and commissions report to the select board on an annual basis is to help us, or give them the opportunity to let us know about, um.
Yeah.
You know, their staffing and, and, you know, issues that, uh, you know, they see with their membership. Okay. So I move approval of the following, uh, individuals, uh, to the following boards, commissions and committees. Indigenous People Celebr- uh, Celebration Committee, Felina Silver, Catherine Florio. Advisory Council on Public Health, Charles Homer, and, uh, Leonard Jacobatus, Economic Dev- no, long night. Economic Development Advisory Board, Ann Myers. Parks and Recreation Commission, John. Oh, that's the one. Oh, I'm sorry. Strike that. Zero Admissions Advisory Board, Kathleen Scanlon. I was thinking of someone else.
That's okay.
Solid Waste Advisory Committee, Dean Cody, Mary Litteris, Catherine O'Connell. Zoning Board of Appeals, Saul Friedman. I'm sorry, Feldman. Uh, Police Commissioners Advisory Committee, Ronald Wilkens- Wilkinson. Planning Board, Blair Hines. Uh, all in favor, uh, for appointing, reappointing those individuals to those, uh, committees? Please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyac.
Aye.
Um, Mike Sandman.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
David Perman.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Okay, you about to say something? Oh, okay. Boards and commissions, new appointments, question of approving the following candidates for appointment to the following boards and commissions. Um, and we're not voting, or we're not interviewing these people, of course, either. Uh, Age Friendly Cities Committee.
We've already interviewed this.
I'm, I'm sorry, you're right.
Yeah.
Uh, Inga Forminti, uh, trustees of Walnut Hill Cemetery, Thomas M. Johnson. Uh, all in favor, please indicate, indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyac.
Aye.
Uh, Michael Sandman.
Uh, I need to abstain on one and vote aye on the other. How do I do?
Okay, well, why don't we start over again? Age Friendly, uh, Cities Committee, all in favor for Inga Forminti, John Van Scoyac.
Aye.
Mike Sandman.
Abstain.
Um, Paul Warren.
Yes.
Uh, David Perman.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Uh, all in favor of trustees of Walnut Hill Cemetery, appointment of Thomas M. Johnson, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyac.
Aye.
Michael Sandman.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
David Perman.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Next, interviews. We have the following candidates for boards and commissions to be interviewed by the select board. And first is Housing Advisory Board, Rebecca Mountner. Uh, by the way, I apologize, we should've put you up earlier. You didn't have to sit out here all this time, but that's life.
With no problem. Just.
We have to sit here too, so.
Yep.
Oh, well.
It's always good to be reminded of all that you folks do and what a, what a generous commitment it is to the town to be on the select board.
So could you introduce yourself to our vast TV audience and, um, give us some, uh, reason why you'd like to be a member of the Housing Advisory Board?
Sure. So, good evening. My name is Rebecca Plout-Mountner. I live in Precinct 11. I've been a town meeting, I was a town meeting member for 14 years and stepped down this year, partly because I, um, have taken a more demanding professional job, uh, full-time job in the city, but, um, I, in, in the field of affordable housing. So I have spent the last 30 years working in the field of affordable housing. Most of that time has been as a nonprofit developer. I've been involved in developing well over 1,500 units of affordable housing, everything from very small domestic violence shelters in Western Mass and in Greater Boston, to one of the most complex 21-building scattered site affordable housing projects the city of Boston has ever financed. I understand every aspect of affordable housing developments and operations. I worked at the Boston Housing Authority early in my career. Right now, I oversee a portfolio of 750 affordable units and I've done, um, in my career, have worked with a lot of owners, helping them figure out not just how to build affordable housing, but to maintain it and, and keep it as an asset that will serve the community and the folks who live there for a long time to come. I'm interested in serving on the HAB because then numerous HAB meetings, um, it's a very important body in terms of supporting the creation and preservation of affordable housing in Brookline. And one of its, um, key responsibilities is reviewing funding applications from developers. And I think it would be advantageous to the HAB to have someone with several decades of experience on the ground, um, on the committee, representing the town in deciding what to fund. A good portion of my job for the last 20 years has been securing funding for municipalities for affordable housing. So, um, I would bring expertise in how other municipalities around the, the state do it. I also have worked in Connecticut and for a year ran a training for, um, developers and service providers in Massa- in, in Connecticut for about, probably four or five years, training them in how to do this work. So I have experience working with many municipalities in Connecticut as well as Massachusetts. But as a develop, so I both bring, um, familiarity with best practices and worst practices. But probably most importantly, as a developer, um, I think it's very important to have the perspective of someone with a lot of hands-on development experience on the board. There are already current board members like Jonathan Klein, who understand the business well, um, also Pam Goodman, like folks who have had more of a bigger picture view, um, and I respect enormously and have respected enormously for decades. But I think the perspective of someone who has stayed pretty close to the ground, um, would be very helpful to the town and the board. I mean, to put it simply, I know where the bodies are buried. I know the tricks developers play. I am in this market and I know what is, um, what is true and what is fluff. Um, and one example of how I have, uh, brought that expertise to bear is in the last year, And one example of how I have brought that expertise to bear is in the last year, you may be familiar with Boston's Building Emission Reduction Ordinance, BERTO, which now Newton has considered, and I know we've been looking at, I was on the community advisory group for BERTO. And there were, the city of Boston was with really good intentions trying to create some flexibility for affordable housing. But the, the mechanism that they were using, I won't get into the specifics of it, was going to create like a window for affordable housing that was going to be so big that every private developer, development would pass through it as well. And no one at the city understood enough about the legal entities that are used in, in real estate development to catch that. But because I was on the committee, we were able to change the definition. So it's just one example of how having someone who's in the trenches can be valuable to municipality in trying to craft policy and make tough choices.
Thank you. I have one question. One of the concerns we have here in Brookline, as I'm sure you know since you live here, is, you know, affordable housing has to include also middle income housing, workforce housing. In other words, across the income spectrum. You know, what ideas do you have that can be used on HAB which, you know, through the Affordable Housing Trust can go up to 120% of AMI?
Yeah, I think that flexibility in funding is probably the critical tool. It's always, we were having this conversation in the office a couple of weeks ago. It's always stunning to people how, given how high market units, Brookline may be one of the few places where cross subsidy works. But in today's market, this was not true 20 years ago, but in today's market where construction prices are so high and interest rates are high, most market rate developments in the Commonwealth don't throw off enough cash to provide enough subsidy to create another affordable unit. Unfortunately. There are times in markets where it does work really well. We might be at one in the future, but right now we are not. I was actually at a training, a contractor was doing for some young people, running a summer internship program. And it's, you know, it's 500, it's routinely these days $400,000 to $500,000 a unit for hard costs alone. That doesn't include the architects, the engineer, the construction loan interest. So in Boston, we routinely have, have things weighing in at over 500, you know, $600,000, $700,000 a unit. If that's the cost, yes, in Brookline, there will be situations where there will be market rate condos or rental that can, can cover that. But in the rental market, it's really hard to generate enough cash in today's world to really do effective cross subsidy, which means that what you mentioned, having funds dedicated to that 100 to 120 band is really the only way you're going to be able to effectively create those units.
Yeah, Paul?
Yep. Rebecca, thank you for coming and I really appreciate the clarity of your presentation and value that you'd add. I have two questions. One, any conflicts? You said you're a developer like.
So that, that is a good question. I work for the Jamaica Plain Neighbor Development Corporation and we don't currently have any work we are doing in Brookline. We are exploring a project in Brookline. I was actually hoping, part of the reason I asked for the later date was I was hoping that it would be determined by now if that was moving forward, because if it was, I would have removed my application. So I expect that I'm going to know in about four weeks' time if it's really.
But you earn your living by.
Yes.
By this business. Okay, that's just helpful for me to understand.
Yeah, yeah. Most of my work is in the city of Boston, but not exclusively. We're looking at a project in Quincy right now and.
Okay. And then the second question is, what are we not doing? What, what should we be doing more of in Brooklyn? To get more affordable housing, deed restricted affordable housing.
Well, I just want to say, I think one thing the town has done really well that it was, has only started doing recently, is providing the kind of emergency assistance that keeps people from being evicted. I think that's really crucial. It's not creating permanent affordable housing. But when you think about the impact on families, avoiding eviction is tremendous. And especially if you get evicted from subsidized housing, if you live in public housing and you fall behind on something or you get evicted for cause, if you have a Section 8 voucher and for some reason you can't, you get evicted, you basically can never get publicly subsidized housing again. It is, as we say, kind of a game ending move. So even though, I mean, I'm, I'm a landlord, right? I'm like literally responsible for 750 units. We have some third-party management companies that, but I do have that portfolio. You know, I do evict people from subsidized housing because sometimes you have to, to protect other tenants or sometimes the situation has gotten just really out of control. But I think the work, the work to prevent evictions is, is really crucial because it's just extraordinarily hard for folks to come back from that. In terms of, so that's something I think the town has just started doing recently that's incredibly meaningful. I don't think people who have not been on the brink of, of losing their homes understand how significant that is. And that's without even talking about the impact on children and families. You know, you become homeless, you can't go to your school anymore, you're shuttled around, like it's just, the ripple effect is stunning. I have, on developments, I think we, I think the town's done a lot of things right. I'm not saying that just to curry favor with folks. I think the changes to the inclusionary zoning were good. I think sometimes we focus so much on the small wins, we neglect the big wins. Like, you know, doing tiny incremental changes and, you know, we lost in Coolidge Corner, a floor off a building, kind of easily about six years ago. And like, it's very, very hard to create 11 affordable units in Coolidge Corner. I think that's what we lost on the Babcock, Babcock project. So I think we kind of have to keep our eye on the ball and be willing to fight on the big things and not spend quite so much time on the small things. For instance, like ADUs, like let's just do them. Let's not make it, I was in town meeting, right? Like the definition of who could do it got narrower and narrower and narrower. I mean, a lot of people put in so much effort, it's hundreds of hours into it. And we narrowed it down and narrowed it down and then it was like, what's the impact going to be? So I think we have to be not shy away from doing things that are sometimes harder, but a little bit bigger. Because the long-term impact is going to be, make it worth it.
Thanks.
Okay. One more question. We're trying to avoid the half hour long.
Just in terms of your overall philosophy around housing development, do you see it, do you look at it at a macro level? Municipality-wide, are you more a neighborhood by neighborhood approach? Would you look at North Brookline the same way you look at South Brookline, for example?
So every project is different. That's part of why my job's, like, that's why I love what I do. Because every project, there's no two projects that are ever the same. I once did a project in Acton and Sudbury for the local housing authorities at the same time. You'd think it's, it was different. I think very different things are needed in Brookline. I think if there's a real tension, there's a lot of reason to build more affordable housing in North Brookline where there's better public transportation access and you can be less car reliance and perhaps more community for folks. And yet it doesn't make sense to have all our affordable housing concentrated in one part of town. That's not good for anyone. The folks in South Brookline are missing out from living in a much diverse from a class income point of view town, or most of South Brookline, not, not near Hancock Village. So I think, I mean, every project is different. Every project is neighborhood specific. And every project has the same fundamentals, like it has to provide a decent living experience for the tenants. It has to cash flow. We want it to be as energy efficient as possible. It has to, nothing will ever be aesthetically pleasing to, to everyone. But, you know, we need to work with folks. Sometimes that means fitting into the, to the local aesthetic and sometimes it means doing something different because, because of like, and it really is, you know, you just, some things cannot be created in, in this century the way they were done in the past. So it is, it's, the answer is kind of, it's both. It's, each project is unique and there are the same fundamentals that make any project a good project. But there's a huge diversity. I do a lot of homeownership. I do housing for, rental housing for homeless people. You know, there's a huge range.
Thank you. And we'll be, we'll be making appointments at a later meeting. And you hear from us. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks Rebecca.
Okay, next, Advisory Council on, I think it's on Public Health, right? Not of Public Health.
It is of.
Oh.
And LaShira Nolan is with us online. I've promoted you to a co-host. You should be able to share your screen now.
Okay, great. Give me one second. I'm just trying to make sure that I can bring my camera on for you all.
Sorry, thank you. Yes, share your video, not your screen.
No worries. Give me.
Who wants us to interview everybody? Oh, but.
And we had more. We had more.
Okay.
Yeah, I see you coming into the room again.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I'm just going to join on my computer. I was having trouble with my phone here.
Okay, I've promoted your computer and you should be able to turn your camera on.
Okay, great.
Okay. So introduce yourself. Oh, echo, how do we turn that off?
Let me see.
Is me? That's not me.
There we go.
Okay. Okay, introduce yourself and tell us why you'd like to be a member of the Advisory Council of Public Health.
Absolutely. It's such a pleasure to get to be here in community with everyone. My name is LaShira Nolan, but everyone calls me Lash. And I am a internal medicine resident physician at Brigham and Women's Hospital. I recently graduated from Harvard Medical School and Harvard Kennedy School with my MD and my master's in public policy as well. I'm interested in this position because I'm a fervent believer in the fact that the socio-political determinants of health must be addressed in order for us to see the best health outcomes for our, our patients and communities. The experience that I have ranges in the policy world from the federal to the local level. At the federal level, I've served as a part of the White House's Health Equity Roundtable while, where I provided advice and in an end that advisory role, suggested different things that should be done at the federal level to increase health equity across the country. At the state level, I've worked with Senator Liz Miranda specifically as an advisor to helping her improve legislation around efforts around maternal health, specifically the maternal health mortality differences that we see in between black women and white women. And then finally, at the local level, I've worked with the city of Cambridge on their community safety department efforts and also with the city of Boston in regard to their community health improvement and implementation plans. So I think that all of these things together have made me that much more passionate about supporting the communities here in Brookline. I moved here three years ago when I was still a student at Harvard Medical School. And I think the thing that immediately became most striking to me is the, the history that's associated with the town. A lot of times when I tell people that I live in Brookline, especially people who identify as black, they say, oh, wow, are you okay? Is that a space that you want to be in? Do you feel safe in that neighborhood? And I certainly felt safe here, but I do think that the town could continue to improve efforts in making this safe, it's into making this space more accessible, to making it a space that does promote social justice and racial equity. When I checked out the website that the advisory on public health.
Oh, you lost your, lost your audio.
For some reason we lost your audio. Standby, it may be on our end.
Okay.
Oh, there we go. You're back. You left off, we, we last heard when you checked out the website.
Yes, yeah. So when I checked out the website, I did see that in 2020, there was a statement about racism in public health and, and this idea that there was going to be a plan for how to address that in the town. But I wasn't able to find what exactly were those action plans, what exactly were those next steps forward? And I think that's something that I would be particularly interested in exploring further if selected to be in this position. And in addition to that, I also have a nonprofit organization called We Got Us, which is a coalition of young people that are passionate about addressing public health concerns around racial equity across the greater Boston area. And I think that that is very emblematic of what I hope to bring to this role. I'm at the start of my medical career, I'm on the grounds, talking to folks, doing grassroots work. And I do think that that is a perspective that, that the council could very much so benefit from. And I will look forward from getting to learn from my colleagues and also bringing this fresh perspective and, and bringing it to the forefront as well. So I look forward to your questions and am very excited and thankful to be here.
I was interested in your statement that some of your friends ask you whether you're comfortable living in Brookline. I've lived here 24 years. I'm very comfortable. But I'd be interested in your, I mean, not now, but at some point, your, you know, thoughts as to, you know, how our town could maybe address, you know, its communication, its, you know, the image that it, it has, you know, based on historical issues as well as any current issues and how we can address them. You know, so, so that people don't have the wrong impression that, you know, we as black people should be uncomfortable here in Brookline more so than, for example, in Boston or, or I grew up in Philadelphia.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's honestly, it's, it's a big question. I think that it's one that takes self-reflection on the part of, of the town leaders generally. But I think from, from my perspective and, and doing this work of racial equity, the first step is, is having that space to do that reflection and then from there, having a reckoning and, and understanding that redlining historical policies and practices that still impact things like access to housing, access to safe spaces to exercise. And all of those things, I think, need to be publicly acknowledged. And from there, there needs to be a serious action plan where, whether it's having a listening sessions or circles where we're talking to black residents or residents of color about their experience with the racism in the city. And then from there, thinking about what already exists, what infrastructure, what projects and organizations are already doing that work and then using those conversations in that infrastructure that exists to then build on that further. So I think that it's, it's a mix of, of first, making sure that we're reflective and understanding that the issue does exist and that we reckon with that history. And then from there, building on that with, with praxis and making sure that there's an action plan. There's, how many years ahead of time do we want to make sure that this is done? You know, it can't just be like, yeah, we're going to change things, we're going to do better. But what exactly is the timeline and what are our objectives and the things that we're hoping to accomplish based off of the feedback that we've gotten from the communities that might be impacted?
Paul?
Hi, good evening. Thank you for your application. First, my, my wife is a physician. She oversees your, in your first year of residency, did you say? I'm wondering, where do you find the time to do what you're doing? And I ask that seriously. I mean, you, as a resident, you're a pretty busy person.
Yeah.
And you're, you're doing a heck of a lot. So that's a rhetorical question. With respect to all of this, this experience that you're bringing and your, your lens on equity, can you make a, give us an idea of the types of things that you'd be advocating for with respect to public health? Should you, should you serve?
Yeah, so I can, I can answer your first question about how do I find the time. For me, seeing patients is the greatest gift of all. But I also feel like understanding how to impact the systemic is what gives me life and keeps me going. Because sometimes if a patient can't afford a medication, if a patient can't afford to have transportation to even get to clinic, those are the things that can really grind at physicians over time and that's what leads to these, these levels of burnout. So I think for me, it really sustains me to be able to attack these, these issues at the systemic level. And that's why I think it's important for me to always make time for that. In, in regard to what I would like to see from the public health perspective, is I think from my understanding, the advisory's role is to take different pieces of legislation that come in and to try to provide some type of a public health insight as to, you know, is there a public health lens that applies to this? Are there ways that we can think about economic issue and housing issues from a public health perspective? And I think what I would hope to do is help, to, to help, to help folks understand that some of the discrepancies and the differences that we see with racial disparities is related to the socio-political determinants of health. For example, policy decisions that have been made, the way that we might have implicit biases at play when certain decisions are made, even at the individual level. And I think that what I would hope to do is to help folks understand that some of those pieces of legislation that we're looking at, we should make sure that we're applying a lens of social justice and understanding that even though we might not exactly understand the relationship between the fact that we have a rat problem and, and public health outcomes, but we, that, that, that is something that is in fact irrelevant and that who are those individuals who are disproportionately impacted by the burden of having rats and trash cans and things of that sort? So I think that that's the lens that I would hope to apply. And I think that that sometimes is not as evident or it's, it's not as easy for people to, to draw and connect those dots between racial justice and social justice and inequities and, and public health outcomes. And I think that that's really what I would hope to do.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Lash Nolan, right?
Yes, it was such a pleasure.
Okay, LaShaya. We're going to be making our selections at a later meeting and we'll be in touch with you at that point.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shira Fisher is not, is not appearing tonight, I understand.
Shira Fisher is online.
Oh, she's, oh, she is. Oh, she's, oh, she is. Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yep. So, uh, introduce yourself and tell us why you're interested in the, um, Advisory Committee of Public Health.
All right. Thanks so much. Thanks to the Select Board for allowing me this time this evening and to present remotely. And I realize it's late, I'll try to be brief. Um, I'm away at summer camp with my kids actually right now. My name is Shira Fisher. I grew up here in Brookline. After graduating Brookline High, I studied biochemistry and went on to work in health policy at the Institute of Medicine, which is now the National Academy of Medicine in Washington, DC. I returned to Massachusetts for a combined medical degree and PhD in epidemiology at UMass in Worcester. And early in my training, I, um, decided, I recognized that while doctors can help individuals in their clinical care, like others have mentioned, the issues in our society are much more systemic. And I decided I want to work on improving health at a higher level. So I proceeded to a clinical informatics fellowship at Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center on Harvard Medical School. I've since worked for a decade at the Van Corporation, which is a nonpartisan, nonprofit think tank, a leader in health policy, and I'm a senior physician policy researcher there. My research focuses on health information technology. And I believe we have data and tools that are not being used to best their ability to improve health. Um, I listened to the other candidate interviews from a few weeks ago. Um, and I echo Anthony and his comments about the wealth of expertise and experiences each person has to offer and was very impressed from, um, all of them and the previous candidate as well. Brookline is very lucky. Uh, my unique contributions would be the following. I've served Brookline in many ways so far, including as a town meeting member for the past 10 years in Precinct 11. And on the redistricting committee in 2021. So I know a lot of people involved in Brookline and I'm good at connecting and collaborating. I'm trained in both medicine and epidemiology. I work in health policy. And my expertise in informatics and data could broaden the council's expertise. Um, and lastly, I would bring new energy and ideas to the Advisory Council. Um, local government is limited in what it can do, particularly around public health. Brookline, however, has opportunities to serve its citizens and support their health in direct and indirect ways. Um, and like it often does through town meeting, to serve as a model for other towns and for the state level. Like others have mentioned, health is much more than just medical care. It's affected by how easy it is to be outside. Use parks, access healthy foods, access preventive care and get information about healthy behaviors and healthcare. Um, I haven't presented before the board before, but I have spoken to Segal Rice in the past and to some other board members to learn more about the role. And I'd be happy to share some specific ideas I have. But in short, I'd be honored to bring my ideas, energy and expertise.
Thank you. Any questions? Done.
Shira, hi, how are you?
Hi, good. How are you?
Good. And thank you for applying. Do you mind, uh, just give us one of the, uh, you know, you, you just mentioned at the end there that you have some ideas you'd be happy to share. Pick one and.
Sure. Um, nutrition is something that leads to health. I've supported work, um, with some high school students to bring more vegetarian and vegan options to Brookline Public School cafeterias. Uh, again, that's a systemic solution to reduce meat consumption. Vegetarian options are better for the planet and often healthier. And it's a way to support nutrition education. So it's both, um, education and actual action right within our public schools. That's one example.
Great. Thank, thanks, Shira. And thanks for applying.
Anybody? Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Just, how do, how do we select among? Yeah. Yeah. We're very, we're very fortunate. We're very fortunate.
So there is one voting seat and two affiliate seats that are non-voting for the Advisory Council of Public.
That is good to know. That is good to know. And how many candidates we interviewed so far?
Five, and those are all of the candidates to be interviewed at this time in terms of applications received.
I, I do want, I do, I don't have a question, but I do want to, uh, thank Shira for her application, um, and bring it forward and. And, and, I mean, everybody, um, just it, the, the amount of, um. Expertise and knowledge and breadth of around, uh, public health policy. Each individual would bring, uh, a unique perspective and a lot of value. So it's going to be, uh, a very, very difficult decision, but I really appreciated your epidemiology, your medical background in, in your policy intersection. It's really great. Thank you, Shira.
Sure. Thank you. We'll be making our selection at a later ma, uh, later meeting. Thank you for applying. John's going to take over.
Yes. I'll do my best. Um, and, um, I see that the next item on the agenda is, uh, interview for the Economic Development Advisory Board. Uh, is George Cole going to join us for that?
Yes, George Cole is online. George, you have been promoted. You should be able to start your video and it looks like you have.
I have. Good evening and thanks for the opportunity to speak with you this evening, Select Board. My name is George Cole. I'm a 40-year resident of Brookline and I am currently in probably my 25th or 26th year on the Brookline Building Commission as well. By background, I'm an architect by training. But, um, for the last 40 years have practiced in the areas of, uh, real estate development and consulting. I, um, have experienced, direct experience in development of large-scale projects. Two of which are Brookline, um, Brookline Place, where my client was Boston Children's Hospital. And the Booth Theater Complex for Boston University. What I do currently in my civilian job is I primarily advise and consult to nonprofits. Major healthcare and higher ed institutions and corporations on really the deployment of their real estate. And how best to use their real estate to further their mission. I'm specifically sir, interested in serving on EDAB because I see, um, the intersection of profit and mission, um, on the board, whereas the mission is an enrichment of life in Brookline generally and a tax base. And that's the profit element. It's to increase revenues to the town. But also to really enrich, uh, the environment of the town, um, through promoting a greater diversity of uses and opportunities for small businesses and job creation. I've been aware of EDAB for many, many years. I have many friends who have served on that board. And, um, with my semi-retirement from my professional life, I now have the opportunity, the time and the opportunity to offer my, uh, assistance on that board. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much, uh, George. And turning to the board members, any questions? I think Mike Sammon. I, I have a, a, a question I, that I should know the answer to. Are you, you going to remain on the building committee?
On the building commission, absolutely. Unless you guys kick me off.
That won't happen. Uh, thank you.
We have Pierce to get through, Mike. I'm not, I'm not going to give up before that's successfully completed.
All right, all right.
Anything else, Mike?
No, no.
Paul Warren?
Well. George, thank you for, uh, for coming this evening. Uh, I'll ask the same question I asked earlier candidate on a, for a different board. Any conflicts, uh, being on EDAB, given your, uh, professional, you know, your day job, how you earn your money?
No, I have no projects or clients currently active in Brookline. And if I did, I would, uh, recuse myself from.
Okay, great. Thank you. And my, my second question is, um, I mean, you've been around long enough to know our constraints. Where's the opportunity for us?
You know, that's a really good, good question. I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's it. That's my question.
Um, you know, we're, we're constrained by, um, legacy ownership, often ownership of parcels that are developable and could be enhanced. Uh, there's no desire upon, on ownership to do anything with them. We're also, uh, land constrained, as you know, and we also have a large percentage of our land held by nonprofits who are not. Who may be subject to pilots, but not to, um, real estate taxes. I think the real opportunity here is to look at legacy owners of larger scale developable parcels and Stop and Shop on Harvard Street and TJ Maxx on Harvard Street come to mind. Where there may be an opportunity to provide sufficient incentive to promote, um. You know, higher and better uses of those sites in a way that's compatible with overall community goals, not just tax revenue, but overall use and transportation goals as well. So that, that's where I would like to focus. And, you know, having been in the development field for 40 years, I really understand what a prof, what it takes for a developer to actually pull the trigger. And that's what the perspective that I would like to bring, um, to EDAB. Um, there's, there are many developers on EDAB already, but, uh, I have that, um, expertise and perspective as well.
Right. And, and, and thank you, George, for, for mentioning those two parcels. And I do think that that's an important, um, uh, perspective to have is how do we, uh, target? You know, specific, uh, uh, legacy owners and help them, uh, better utilize those, uh, those spaces. And I think Stop and Shop, we, you know, this board excluded Stop and Shop uh, and TJ Maxx from the, uh, Harvard Street MBTA Communities Act. Um, it, it, it wasn't included in the upzoning. So, uh, those are two parcels that, um, I think need some, some focus and some collaboration. So I'm, I'm glad you mentioned them.
You know, honestly, Paul, I see any surface parking lot in a commercial area as a, a waste of an opportunity.
Thank you for mentioning that as well.
So where do the customers of the, um, businesses, uh, park their vehicles?
Well, they may, they may be, uh, under, under those buildings instead of on the surface. Or they may use alternative means of transportation.
Which is a very expensive way of, um, providing parking.
It is. And that's why you have to provide incentive for those owners to redevelop.
But, uh, by the way, what, what do you think of the concern that many people in the community have that, uh, Stop and Shop and TJ Maxx serve, serve a very important, um, uh, shopping, uh, areas or businesses for particularly low-income and elderly residents of town?
Yeah, I think that's, it, they're extremely important in that way. And I would see, you know, as an example, Stop and Shop recently just moved, um, in the, uh, New Balance Development from a standalone surface park store to a second floor store, which is combined with, um, housing. This is over in, uh, I think it's called, um, Beacon Yards or it's, it's part of the New Balance complex on Everett Street, the new Stop and Shop. Anyway, there are ways to do supermarkets within larger developments. Um, Star Market over in the Fenway is now moving over to the new, um, lab building that Samuels is building adjacent to Landmark.
And Star is building one in Newton, uh, that is similarly part of a multi-story complex on, it's on Beacon Street in, um, right near Walnut.
So again, these are opportunities to just explore.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not sure they can be done, but they need to be explored.
Yeah, keep our minds open. Thank you. We'll be, uh, making our, uh, selection to the, uh, EDAB board, uh, at a future meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next, uh, Brookline Commission on Disability. Kiran Batia?
Kiran has emailed me earlier to request to postpone the interview due to a family emergency.
Okay. Franklin Pinera Lopez?
Uh, I don't see Franklin Pinera Lopez online. If you're online, could you raise your hand? Using the raise the hand feature? I do not see Franklin online, so I'll have to reach out to him.
We, we can, uh, re, uh, reschedule. Okay, that's the end of our interviews. Final item is Select Board Board and, Board and Commissions assignments. These are really committee assignments. Question of approving Select Board members' assignments to various boards and commissions and committees. Uh, any discussion of that? It's, uh, in the packet? Okay, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye, so we.
Did you not want to take the time to go line by line, Bernard?
Want to go home.
Boy, do I want to go home.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoyeck?
Aye.
Uh, Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Perelman?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. And that is the conclusion of our meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Excellent meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.